Note that before we get going that rather than a formal agenda, we will have a report on the Oakbrook Streetlight situation during City Manager's Report. We can discuss it then.
And Mayor, I will be, I will be bringing that item forward first before the other items.
Thanks. It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, January 4th, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter. He's present. Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wellen. He's here. Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. The first item of business today is proclamations and presentations. And we have a proclamation declaring January 18th, 2021 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service and February as Black History Month. I'd like to note that on the 14th of January, our, at 6:00 PM, our MLK virtual celebration will event will go live. The link will be posted, if it isn't already, on the city website and some partner entities. So I'd encourage you all to participate by watching that in this strange COVID environment. Well, for this presentation, we have Ms. Kimmy Ginn, who is a member of the MLK Committee. I think I saw her in the waiting room.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of the city of Lakewood and my fellow council members. It's always a, an important event in Lakewood. I look back on the many events that I've shared with Joe Ellen and Claudia Thomas. And I think that we have a legacy now. I believe it's our 18th MLK celebration, unique to Lakewood and what may be the most truly diverse community in the, in the state. People of so many different backgrounds, but this one is special with respect to MLK and all that he did. Whereas Monday, January 18th, 2021, is designated as a federal holiday celebrating the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who dedicated his life to fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity, and equal justice for all. And whereas such recognition is a direct result of his many contributions to society through his deeds and words. And whereas through his march on Washington and his "I Have a Dream" speech, Dr. King reached a worldwide audience and was recognized by people from all walks, walks of life as the conscious of an entire nation. And whereas the month of February is designated as Black History Month to highlight struggles of race and enfranchisement in American history. And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all people are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the ideals of a free society and is a community of great cultural diversity, which it values and celebrates, and is dedicated to the fraternity and community of all people. And whereas the city of Lakewood will again honor the distinguished legacy of Dr. King at its 18th annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Ceremony held virtually on Thursday, January 14th, 2021, beginning at 6:00 PM. Now, therefore, the City of Lakewood Council hereby proclaims January 18th, 2021, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service and the month of February 2020 as Black History Month. And the city of Lakewood invites all citizens to join us in these observances. Proclaim this fourth day of January 2021, Don Anderson, Mayor. And Ms. Ginn, would you please share a few words with us?
Absolutely. First of all, let me say it's an honor to be with you tonight, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to let you know that the process of putting this wonderful program together that's going to be presented on January 14th has been a very collaborative effort. We have from the youngest to the oldest, Joe Ethel, who's the founder of this wonderful celebration that continues, is a part of the presentation. We have a lot of exciting people from the community, giving a lot of insight to what it's like to live with diversity here in Lakewood. And I think it's important to hear from the young to our elders what we mean when we say diversity and inclusivity here in Lakewood. I think all of you will be very proud of the efforts. It's been a very, very collaborative effort. Lot of insight, lot of input, lot of creativity. And of course, with the pandemic, we had to be extra creative this year because we couldn't do things live. But I think you will, you'll get a sense of life and spirit, hope and optimism, because the theme is about injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And we want to make sure that theme is carried through, but with a sense of hope and optimism. We've had a very, very challenging year with the pandemic. And when we look at all of the incidents, unfortunately, with losing many citizens here in the city of Lakewood to the, to the horrible COVID-19, to some of the incidents that we have, we have faced throughout this nation with discrimination and racism. I'm proud to be a Lakewood citizen, a Lakewood community member, and I'm very, very, very proud of all the hard work. And I think as folks view this event on the 14th, I think our community will see that we truly value diversity in Lakewood.
Well, thank you very much. I, I don't know if you recall, but some years ago, I attended a small program you presented on Kwanzaa. Invitation of your brother.
Oh, thanks. Oh, was that with the Rotary?
Yeah, I was connected with Rotary at the time, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, one thing I pride myself on is, is sharing information that I think inspires and empowers people to truly be about a, a community of, of being together. We're all human beings. You'll find at the end of the program, I actually share a poem about being the human family that was created by Maya Angelou. And I truly believe that. So, yeah, we're demonstrating what it's supposed to be and hopefully will be an example to other cities. So I look forward to getting this out on the airways and hoping our community will appreciate all the hard work from the committee and, and not only look at the dream, but take it to action. It's wonderful to have a dream, and Dr. King's had a beautiful dream, but a lot of action hasn't come behind that dream. And so this is a great opportunity, and we hope it inspires people to act.
Well, thanks again for joining us tonight and
My pleasure. Thank you all so much.
Thank you and the committee for all the work that you did on the program this year.
My pleasure. See y'all.
Bye. We now move to the Clover Park School District Report. For this, we have Board President Marty Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor Anderson and City Council. As always, we appreciate so much each and everything that you do individually and collectively as an investment in our community. We're just so grateful for it. Also want to acknowledge a happy holidays to everyone. We trust that each of you had as wonderful time as you can during this unusual COVID environment, but at least we have an opportunity to be with our family and our community. So thank you for who you are, what you do in this time of year as well. I appreciated hearing the comments about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And the opportunity to celebrate what he stands for and its impact on our people today. So that was exciting to hear. So thank you for that. We have several different things that are going on in the district that I'd like to report on. And of course, you can ask any questions during the middle of it or wait till the end, whatever works best for you, all of you. I want to say that one of the most important things is that we plan to bring our wonderful students back to school. We've been wanting to do this for so long, as you know. And as the numbers hopefully move in the right direction and as vaccines have been released, our plan is to be able to utilize the beginning of February to bring elementary kids and then as soon as possible ninth graders and seniors as well, the rest of our students back to that in-person and hybrid models of learning. And so that's very important to us and we're looking forward to. The, and I can give you more information. Of course, that's on our website and we're working very hard to communicate that to our family. And of course, it's also contingent upon COVID numbers in the Department of Health. But we are hopeful and being strategic at the same time and moving to get our, our students back with our teachers in the classroom as soon as possible. It's exciting. As the new year comes, there's an opportunity that we have to elect officers for the Clover Park School District Board of Directors. And while I'm going, I've been reelected to serve as president for one more term. We've also seen election of some of our new members, of which we're just really excited about. And so Alyssa Anderson Pearson will be our new Vice President. And so that's exciting for us to have a younger voice and individual that is going to be able to just share her insights and experiences towards leadership for our school board. And then Anthony Valles, one of our newer members as well, is going to be serving as our legislative representative. So it's just so exciting for us to be able to see some leadership capacity being developed of people that we really have a lot of confidence on in the board that can carry our vision and our culture forward. And then, as we know, both school board directors, Carol Jacobs and Paul Agaman will still be serving, but they have been gracious to even be the ones who nominated their successors. So that, that just shows the real heart and sacrifice of, of building leaders. And so we have a, a belief that what leaders do best is that we build leaders. So we're doing our best to actually walk that out. We've been working very hard as a school board, as, as many of you know, to increase our effectiveness around equity. And Mayor Anderson, I really appreciate what you said about the reality of Lakewood. It's one of the most diverse and therefore most amazing cities that we could live in in the state of Washington. And our goal is, of course, to see us know how to leverage our differences so that indeed we are greater together than what we would be able to be if we didn't know how to truly value and connect one another. So our school board has been working very hard at being more strategic and just caring towards growing in equity. And our school board is recognized for some of our efforts. And we were able to do a presentation with our Washington State School Directors Association for Equity. And that's on our school website. And I just encourage you to be able to look at that. We're proud of the work that we've done. We're proud that we are honored by the Washington State School Board Directors Association. So that was done by Superintendent Banner, our Equity and Diversity Inclusion Program Manager, Grant Twymon, and then myself as a representative of the board. And so it was an organic conversation about the efforts that we're making to truly be inclusive. But also I'd like to say very humbly that January is seen, as we often know and have heard, that it is School Board Directors' Recognition Month. And so I, I feel bad, you know, saying that, but I do want to recognize how hard our school board directors work. And as you know, the compensation is the stipend for those who request it for certain meetings. And so you really don't get paid. It's a lot of effort and work. It's a lot of learning. It's a lot of reading. It's a lot of collaboration. And it's a lot of being able to represent students who really aren't the ones who elected you. It's kind of an interesting position, as you can only imagine. So our constituents are the ones who can't vote. And we as school board directors are actually liaisons between the Professional Education Committee of Clover Park School District and then our individuals and, and the persons of our city who do elect us and vote for us. And yet we represent students. And so we're proud to do that. And I would like to say that I'm personally very grateful and proud for each one of our school board directors. I think they all bring amazing talents, experiences, and insights. And our goal is that we learn how to become an amazing team that knows how to collectively represent our community. Our superintendent, I'd like to brag on him for just a moment. Superintendent Ron Banner recently served, I mean, received the Employer Patriot Award. And it's a rather prestigious, prestigious award that is given to basically an employer who knows how to properly work to be able to support our military individuals who serve specifically in the Guard or National Guard and Reserve, knowing how to, how to be able to be flexible and able to not only honor those positions, but to work with them to make sure that we do our part to make, just, you know, make life meaningful and helpful to those who serve in the military, especially in the reserves and the National Guard. So we're just thankful for that extra work that Ron Banner has put in. We're proud of him. We also want to acknowledge that our early learning program is currently enrolling for eligible students for its online at-home preschool experience. We've been doing this for a while. But each, each family receives the access that they need to be able to be involved in online training. And so this is a way just to supplement what we're trying to do with a hybrid model as well. And so enrolling students just helps them get ready to join their classmates. Yeah, students get ready to come back to school here soon. There is a few other things on the agenda that are coming up that I'd like to just remind everybody of. We have a, the board meeting on January 11th at 6:00 PM. And in that, there'll be follow-through from some of the comments that we've had in the last two months that have to do with equity and then, as well as other business. And then on January 25th, City Council, we're excited to be able to have a shared meeting with you. And thank you so much for hosting it where we get to come together and be collaborative and really seek what is in the best interest of the community. And then again, we also just want to remind you that on January 18th, that's the official day that we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And school is closed on that day as a way of honoring who he is, what he stands, what he stood for. And so that is the main part of my just explanation of what we're doing as a school board to you. Are there any questions on your side?
Any questions from council? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Schaefer, thank you for being here and welcoming, welcoming the new year in with us as we move forward. You know, and certainly much of what you spoke to us emphasized the, there's a, an emphasis on equity that is not unique to the school district, but is also applies to the city and, and to the community as a whole. You know, over the recent years, one of the metrics that we've seen that gives us pride in the direction that our school district has moved has been the, the yearly recognition of teachers who become nationally board certified. And I was wondering how the COVID-19 environment and, and other things have affected that program for the past year and this, if we're still seeing the teachers that want to move forward and doing that and being successful in mentoring them to do so. And I guess my, my other thing was is that given the emergence of, of equity as a, as a really valuable component in, in, in the professionals that serve others, has, is there any changes to the board certification program? Either our own internal program or the national program that are incorporating some new standards or trainings related to equity?
Well, Mike, thank you very much for your questions. And I so much appreciate the understanding of the importance of being nationally board certified. And so that is a way to make sure that our teachers are able to be able to get the highest training that you really can get to be able to work in schools on a national level. Of course, I think what you're alluding to, which is very relevant, is that where we often employ the nationally board certified teachers are in some of our more difficult school settings as well. And so we're just so proud of teachers who have become nationally board certified, go to all that effort. And of course, as you know, we help and, you know, incur their expenses as best we can to promote that. And then we're also know, very frequently asking them and they're, they're desiring to work with some of our school students who need extra help. It's just, it's just a fantastic program. And as far as the attendance, I know it's still going on. I don't know exact, the exact numbers since COVID, but I wrote that down as a note and I'll make sure that we get that back to you. So thank you for asking that question. And I'll let you know how well that program is going and indeed how well we're supporting those teachers. We also, just so that you're aware, we, we do have a program that mentors new teachers as well. And so when new teachers come into our school districts, whether they're from another district or they're just new into teaching, our school district for years has made sure that they have a mentor that helps acclimate them to the, the difficulty of teaching. So often for a teacher, that first year is, is the most difficult that they experience. There's just so many new things to learn and it's very difficult. And so we have seasoned teachers who come alongside and literally help, help them in many ways, just navigating that first year to make it as productive as possible. Of course, this not only helps in our teacher retention, but it helps them being, to be able to be great teachers their first year. So that's another area where we work with our teachers. On the equity side, we have seen a lot of changes in the last couple of years on a national level with the National School Board Association, as well as our state, which is the Los Angeles School District Association. They have had an increased focus on equity. And so we have, we have changed, you know, some of the practices. But for us, what we've been doing is we call it a journey as a school district. And we've been on this journey for quite some time. So with Dr. Doris McEwen, and I think it was about 11 years ago, but she, she asked us to move forward with really making sure that we had policy around having teachers and administrators that reflect our community. And so we as a board did make that a policy, that we wanted to make an effort to make sure that the students would be able to see themselves and their teachers and their administrators. And so that was a focus that we created a long time ago, several years ago. And while that's one step in the right direction, that was one step. And we're thankful for Dr. Harris for suggesting that we as a board move in that direction. And then we've had many other focuses on just really learning what it means to embrace equity and move to a place of really valuing. And, you know, I'm proud of the very fact that behind me, you'll see that, you know, our banner, which is "We See Lakewood." One of the first things that we want to do well is we want to see each child for whom he and she really are. And we want to listen. We want to be sensitive. We want to know their stories. We want to know how to connect with them and be connected to them to where we have true community. And so that is very important to us. And so we, we, while we've had a policy on equity, that's probably, I think it's from 2009. What we've done this last year is we've really leaned into it at a much higher level. We've had two different trainings and specifically in terms of, of learning more about how equity impacts students and our community and that how we as a board also need to be on the journey of truly understanding. So what we haven't wanted to do was just rush to a policy. What our commitment was to truly understand our community first. And then out of a true strength of knowing our community and hearing from our community to have a, what we would call a definition and a policy around equity that is far-reaching. And so while we already do have one, our policies around equity are more than just a declaration and a statement. There are several strategic actions that will be taking place, an ongoing process over, you know, over the next year. And even then, I'm sure that a year from now, when you ask these questions, there'll be new things that we're doing as we learn on this amazing journey and pilgrimage of truly learning how to understand and appreciate all people. So that's, I, that's kind of where we're at. I can just tell you personally, for me, it's been very eye-opening. And so as a individual, I'm able to do a better job of hearing in terms of the, the community voice instead of a fragmented voice. And so I'm able also to see individuals more through their story instead of just my lens. And so that's, it's been so helpful for me on a personal level and of course, on a professional level as well. So thank you, City Council, for also embarking on this journey. I'm sure we'll be able to share more at our joint City Council meeting that we're going to be having.
Any other questions from council? Just, I'd like to note, I really appreciate the recognition that the Clover Park School District has received from the employer's support for Guard and Reserve ESGR. City of Lakewood received similar recognition a couple of years back. I have recently been involved with some Association of Defense Communities meetings where it's been made clear that the Department of Defense is closely looking at the communities that host its bases, that some, in some, the soldier sailors and aldermen do not feel particularly welcome. And that's going to be a consideration in future basing and staffing assignments. So it's, it's good to know that the national organization has recognized both the city and the school district here for its support of our uniformed service members. If we don't have any further questions, we'll venture down the agenda. Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, for joining us tonight.
Yes, thank you so much. We appreciate you and the partnership so very much. Thank you.
So now we move to public comments. In this COVID environment, public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual comment. Please send your comments in advance by Please send your comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk at 6000 Main Street, Southwest Lakewood, Washington 98499, or bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically. Clerk, would you please identify any comments that have been received in advance?
Mayor Anderson, we received comments from Sean Douglas, Lakewood resident. Those comments were emailed to the City Council in advance of the meeting.
Okay, those have been received and will be considered. Now, that doesn't preclude you from making comment tonight. Virtual comments may be made live. You will need to join the Zoom this Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling by telephone, dial 1-253-215-8782, the number on the screen, and enter participant ID 868-72632373, which is also on the screen. Or visit zoom.us and enter that participant ID. Again, that's 868-72632373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier and use the raise hand function to be called upon. When you are unmuted, please provide your name and city residence. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. Outside of that three minute public comment, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting. However, you will not be acknowledged and your microphone will remain muted except for the time you're speaking during your allotted three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone waiting to make comment?
Mayor Anderson, the first individual we have is Julian Wheeler.
Right, Mr. Wheeler.
Mr. Wheeler, you've been unmuted. Can you attempt to provide comments?
He's flickering back and forth. He's been successful before. So Mr. Wheeler, we'll come back to you. It seemed to be having some technical difficulty. I'll call you again after we run through the roster here. Here's the next person is Dennis Haugen.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, former resident of Lakewood. It's rather interesting. I don't know where to start, but I had a black friend call me that I've known for about 10 years. Very successful, had a very good job, living in a nice neighborhood in Seattle. Previous years, he talked about what a wonderful neighborhood he had. The other day, he called me and said, I haven't been to my house in in North Seattle for two weeks. And I said, what's wrong? And he said, crime has arrived and I'm getting harassed. So he moved to Bellingham when he does a 90 mile commute every day or every other day or whatever. But I guess I put, this is my opinion and my opinion of the Democratic Party who's involved in running the state of Washington and influencing the cities. The Democratic Party in Seattle, in my opinion, as well as other cities, maybe about 10 other cities run by Democrats, have done unprecedented torture, damage to people and black people. Unprecedented. I hope you saw the fight for the soul of Seattle, which came in December 13th. You need to watch it. You need to watch it. Because it involves, you see, if you're a part of a group, you can't sit back and say nothing. Saying something and saying nothing can mean the same thing. That was a horrible experience and it continues to be a horrible experience for many people. Now, the date on that release was December 13th. Should have been October 13th. Why do you think that is? And who do you think controls the media? Advertising controls the media. Too many too many outlets are controlled by Communist China because of the big market in Communist China. So you can't produce the news in the same way in China as the US. So the news media keeps a lot of information from you. But nobody and there's a growing list of black leaders, young black leaders. I could give you a list of 25 of them. Then look at the Democratic Party. And when you say diversity, when you say all of these things, just reverse it because what you're accusing people of is exactly what you are. Thank you.
The next person up is Christine Everline. Her hand is down.
Hi, this is Mark Everline. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm a resident of Lakewood, Oakbrook Third Edition. I'm voicing my concern about the streetlight project for Oakbrook Third Edition. This is a voluntarily city-led project that entails installation of new streetlight poles and overhead wires crisscrossing down the street where currently no poles or wires exist. This is not a replacement project. I found out about this project in just the last couple of weeks. I reached out to the city staff to better understand the project and how it came about. In essence, the city manager and staff told me that city codes and documents were properly followed. The project will go forward as is. I disagree. This project is funded by a community development block grant targeting low income neighborhoods. Our census tract, the justification for this project proposed by the city staff has low income populations within it. But this project will not benefit that population group within our census tract. Houses in our neighborhood are selling in the mid to high 400,000s. Not exactly low income. I am concerned that this project is not in line with the objectives and requirements of the CDVG grant. The CDVG program, as well as our city strategic plan, requires engagement with the affected population. The strategic plan states several objectives requiring frequent surveys and focus on inclusive engagement. Our neighborhood was never contacted. In fact, the notice of this project on the City Council Agenda for Approval back in 2019 doesn't even label it as Oakbrook. Instead listed as a census tract number. Who even knows their census tract number? I am supportive of streetlights in the city's vision for getting neighborhoods lit up. This would make sense for adding lights to existing poles, such as what has occurred over by Silicon Park. Where streetlights and poles currently don't exist, the expectation is still poles and underground wires per the city code. And as such, has been installed in the neighborhood east of Lakewood Town Center, south of Acton Park. I've asked the city to pause this project so the proper and meaningful public engagement can occur with our neighborhood. Even though it may have already been contracted, no harm has occurred, as no ground disturbances occurred. The city has a chance to make this right and to ensure proper procedures are adhered to according to state law as well as federal law for financial grants. In close, we in Oakbrook Third Edition consider our neighborhood to be attractive and appealing. Many of us walk the neighborhood throughout day. We have beautiful yards and unique houses. The addition of wooden poles and overhead wiring crisscrossing down the street does not make the neighborhood attractive. That is why we have a streetlight code for still poles and undergrounding in line with our city vision of having attractive neighborhoods. So I asked the City Council to put this project on hold and to revisit the need for this project as well as the method for implementing it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person in line is identified as Ken.
Hi, I'm Ken Scott. I live in the Sixth Edition Oakbrook. And my concern is with the poles and the lines. First, I'd like to thank you for having this comment session. And I recognize the project's probably too far along to really affect without a great expense. It'd be very expensive to stop these contractors and return all the materials, but I do agree with the fact that the information to the residents was very poor. When they did the Onyx Drive upgrade, excellent, we had a good year of information. We were given the name of the engineer that was designing it in the design phase and we were able to then make comments as we wished. In this case, I agree there was no information. And there would have been comments like this. Many of the senior citizens here I've talked to are concerned about the change of the appearance of the neighborhood with overhead wires and poles. Just as a matter of thought or future, some of the generic responses I received as to what was going on were not really good. One was to reduce crime in the neighborhood. And I'm not aware of a lot of crime in my neighborhood. Another one was to improve traffic safety. And I'm not aware of any accidents at all in the neighborhood. Those sorts of answers tend to alienate citizens who are asking questions, looking for actual answers. So again, thank you for taking comments. I recognize it's probably way too late to stop this. But in the other neighborhoods, if you can keep the appearance of the city as beautiful as it is, it's really nice to walk down the street and not see things other than trees and houses and skies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person is only identified by telephone number 253-964-2173.
Hello, Mayor, this is Julian. Can you hear me?
All right. Mr. Wheeler.
Nothing beats a good old fashioned phone call, I guess. I'm not sure what happened with the computer connection, but again, I'm Julian Wheeler. I'm attending this meeting primarily as a Lakewood resident. And I just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year and look forward to great things and wonderful vistas here in Lakewood. And I that includes, I guess, coming up next month, the actual 25th anniversary of the city of Lakewood. And with the experiences I've had in the recent past, working on the, you know, the Fort Silicon grounds with the, you know, the cemetery out there to going through the chambers, beautiful reverse parade. I'm looking forward to many good things just with other residents here in Lakewood. I did want to express the gratitude to the people in our congressional district who who selected me to serve as an elector. We took care of that duty on December 14 in Olympia and I cast my vote faithfully. But I also wanted to invite anyone within the sound of my voice and if they could, you know, read on the YouTube comments to attend our Pierce County Accessible Community Advisory Committee, which I have the duty to chair at this point. We are looking for new members, new ideas. We want to make Pierce County, we want to make Lakewood, among other cities and places, more accessible. And in the spirit of the upcoming MLK holiday, the civil rights marches have never ended. They are ongoing. And that includes, for all peoples, including people of different ability levels. The we just want to make sure that as we come out of this quarantine, that the new normal retains the attributes of accessibility which became mainstream in in the past year. And a lot of disability activists were asking for this particular, you know, innovation of remote attendance. And hopefully, we won't lose that as things get back to the new normal. So I wanted to thank, thank you for embracing me as a resident and and also for other disabled military veterans like me and other cancer survivors like me. And I look forward to, you know, productive relationships coming up this year. Thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you. So all the people who have signed up and raised their hand by raising their hand, but if there's anyone else on the video or a call right now who wishes to make public comment, please identify yourself by virtually raising your hand. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Do we see any, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Dan Jordan.
All right, Mr. Jordan.
Hello. All right, all right. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, actually, my name is Dan Jordan and I live in Oakbrook. I've lived in Oakbrook for the past 16 years. I grew up in Oakbrook 40 years ago and moved back in 2003 or 2004. Anyway, my neighbors and I did not hear about the streetlights until very recently. And I just received the map. And I also am concerned about what this is going to do to our neighborhood. We don't want the streetlights, at least not in their current form. If we had been notified, I would, I'm not, I don't object to the streetlights. There's a utility pole between my home and my neighbor's home. And you could literally run a power line from that utility pole between our backyards along our fence line and put a pole in between our yards on the property line between his driveway and my and my parking strip and have a streetlight there. And we wouldn't have to have a power line running down the road. But in its current form, it's not going to enhance our neighborhood. It's not a retrofit fit. As one of the other gentlemen said, we don't have a crime issue in Oakbrook. We don't have any safety issues in Oakbrook. None, no more, no less than anyone else. And and I, just to reiterate, not against the lights. I just don't like them in their current form. It's not going to be good for the neighborhood. And it certainly isn't going to help us, help its aesthetics. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So anyone else who wishes to make public comment? One last call. Anyone else wish to make public comment? Madam Clerk, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Then I'll declare public comment closed. Thank you for all, to all who participated. Now we move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of November 23, 2020. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of December 2, 2020. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of December 7, 2020. D, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of December 14, 2020. E, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $3,811,299.99 for the period of November 14, 2020 through December 15, 2020. F, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,706,528.58 for the period of November 16, 2020 through December 15, 2020. G, motion number 2021-01, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the Port of Tacoma regarding the 146th Street Reconstruction Project. H, motion number 2021-02, authorizing the execution of an agenda to the agreement with Burke Consulting, Inc. for the completion of Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan Development Code and SEPA Plan Action. I, motion number 2021-03, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Fuel Recreation LLC for the Fort Silicon Park Playground Replacement Project. J, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of October 7, 2020. Two, Planning Commission meeting minutes of November 18, 2020.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move adoption of the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Mr. Randstetter, second of I, Ms. Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Now move to the regular agendas. First item, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
The next item's new business. Is there any new business to come before the council?
Not this evening, Mayor.
So then we move to reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. And a belated Happy New Year to all of you. First off, I'd like to call upon our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic, and our city attorney, Heidi Wagner, to give the council an update specific to the Oakbrook Street Lighting Project, as well as some alternatives for city council consideration as we move forward. So I think we're going to start with Mr. Bucic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bucic.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of the City Council. Tonight, I'm going to be giving you some background information and current status of our 2019-2020 Street Lighting Program in the Oakbrook Neighborhood. I'm going to run through a little PowerPoint presentation that's going to give you more of the background and the status where we are. Let me bring this up real quick. So I thought it'd be beneficial just to walk everyone through where we are, how we got to be here. The first thing I want to show you on this slide are actually representations of what's going to be put out in the neighborhood as the current plan is. This is a pole that was installed in the South Gate Neighborhood in 2019. And this is what it's going to look like when we're all said and done. So as a reminder, the streetlight project actually is a part of an annual streetlight program. We typically have anywhere from $150,000 to $170,000 a year allocated for this program. Approximately 90% of the city has streetlights installed already. Back in 2016, the city implemented a major push to convert all the existing lights to LED lights. And all the LED, all the lights we install now are LED lights. And as a point for people, they are dark skies certified, which means that they don't cast light up into the atmosphere. And they're also approved for around military bases. If you recall, last year, I spoke to the council about changing the lighting that we're using that is actually healthier and more acceptable to communities to use, what's known as a lower Kelvin or K, from 3,000 down to 2,700. And that's the lights that are being installed in this neighborhood. Typical approach on our 302-0002 CIP, which is our streetlight project funding, is to install streetlights on existing poles or new wood poles where streetlights do not exist in existing neighborhoods. We have well over 4,000 streetlights across the city right now. Aluminum or concrete poles are primarily used on major roadway projects where they are funded under separate CIP numbers. Typically, those projects are grant funded upwards of 86.5%. Sorry, that's an Amber Alert. 86.5%. And we use the swim funds to match that other 13.5% on the project. The current project was funded in the 2019-2020 budget. At the time of original funding, we had $170,000. We made an application for a CDVG grant, and we were in fact awarded the grant for $160,000. However, only $155,000 is available for us to use. The other $5,000 is used for the staffing necessary to track what we are doing with the funds. Additionally, when we took a look at this neighborhood, we determined that with a relatively small amount of $106,000 more, we could do the entire neighborhood instead of just 44 lights. So we approached council, got authorization to expand the program to do the entire neighborhood with approximately 56 new lights, including new poles. We currently have a contract for about $240,000 to conduct the work. We have engineering permitting and a few other miscellaneous construction management add up to about $21,000 for total project expense of $261,000. This is what we had prepared back in 2018, saying how we were going to be street lighting or lighting up the streets, excuse me, throughout the city. The purple, the magenta color, I want to call it purple, I guess it's magenta. I'm an engineer, I'm not a fashionist, so I don't know. But I call it this color here. And the magenta color is what we actually lit up using computer sound energy in the 2018 timeframe. We, if you recall, that was a really large push with over 340 lights installed. The area of 2019 that we're looking at today, right here, is towards the top of the page, just on the periphery of the larger Oakbrook proper. That was to be done in 2019, but we got the design done in early 2020 and advertised in 2020. And then we have additional work that we have to do in the '21 and '22 timeframe. This was our plan in 2018. Because of how things worked, we actually ended up shifting things for another year and moving projects around as far as timelines go. And we also broke some things up to make sure we could accomplish it. You notice the area around the Onyx Drive where this project is situated is not shown on this graphic because theoretically that project is done already. But you'll see, when you take a look at this, there's not a whole bunch more of the city yet to be lit up. You also can see that the area of the Oakbrook is under Tacoma Public Utilities jurisdiction for light delivery. Computer Sound Energy is over by the Fort Silicon Park, Lake Louise area. And then we have a little bit more of the Lakeview Light and Power and some additional areas off to the east of the city. So I want to talk to you about the timeline of this project. As I indicated, the project design was completed in the spring of 2020. On the May 18, 2020 council, your project was awarded to Transportation Systems, Inc. We did indicate in that memo there were 56 wooden poles to be installed. Since then, based on some feedback from some residents, they've asked us to move the poles around a little bit so it's not right in front of their homes. So we've changed order to end one additional pole. So we'll have 57 that will go in. In the timeframe for when the award was done, as you all know, COVID-19 has impacted many different factions of our community and well as our contractors. The contractor for doing this work has experienced not only delays from supply chain interruptions, but also actual COVID infections of their foreman, the project manager, and other workers. We've been working with them to try to identify when they're going to have all the supplies and materials in hand, as well as when they're going to be able to do the work. We were under the belief, based on what they were telling us in late December, that this work was going to be done by the first of the year. As it turns out, it will not be done, was not done by the first of the year. But in fact, we'll start work this coming Wednesday. Part of the confusion is, is that when we were talking to some of the residents, as well as to others, that we expected this work really to be done by August, when we first awarded the contract. But then, as I indicated, there were delays to the contractor and the supply. So the actual notice to proceed was issued November 23 of last year, and there are 50 working days. Since then, the poles and the hardware have shown up onsite, and the contractor is getting ready to move forward with the construction of it. In the last couple of weeks, we've been hearing from citizens their concerns about the aesthetics, wooden poles, not aluminum or concrete, overhead wires, not buried, lights in general. Some people just don't like streetlights and they're very vocal about it. Lack of notice, and we own that one. Typically, what we do is, prior to going in and doing the construction, we put out a notification, a flyer, to let people know we're coming in, and this is the work that's going to be done. So that when they see the equipment and the contractor show up, it's not a great surprise to them. There was also been some concerns about the deviation from public works engineering standards. I'll get to that in just a moment. Overall, we've received about 20 emails with various degrees of concerns about what we're doing out there. So I want to give you a little bit of background of the setting. This area of Oakbrook is one of the first developments, if not their first one in Oakbrook. My understanding is first home was sold in 1964. At that time, the developer put the power lines and poles all in the backyards. They are visible from the street. You can see them, I've driven through there myself. You can see on the upper left-hand corner, this is just an example of the poles. It's in the backyards of the homes and the wires that run down there. You can also see that there are three locations, which is not a great many, but there are three locations where the existing lines cross the streets and Oakbrook Tennis Club area, Emerald and Garnet, 78 and 76. When we started this evaluation for this project, we were thinking we were going to be able to use and tie off of the poles in the backyard. After looking at this, the project manager and the inspector reached out to Tacoma Public Utilities and said, we've got some concerns about these poles. I think they're the original poles in 1964. Some of them are reaching, very clearly reaching the end of their life. We were concerned about having our contractors climb these poles. After a lot of conversation with TPU, looking at which poles we could come off of, looking at how much vegetation was going to need to be disturbed if we did any work in there, we agreed with TPU that we would use five discrete points of connection for power and not go to the backyards, if at all possible. So this is the graphic of how the streetlights are being laid out. And I believe you can see my mouse. So the upper right-hand corner, you see that there's something called a TPU pole. That's one point of connection. From there, there's going to be a string line of lines, wires, feeding each one of the power poles that had a designated number. When we come down to the bottom right-hand corner, and you can see that there is a line of lines that go up 76th Avenue Southwest to a TPU pole, that's the second point of connection for power. You can see how we have to kind of gerrymander a way around a little bit because there's not a lot of power points for us to go to. And then when we go over to the other side of the community, there's three more. There's the TPU pole at Oakbrook Lane and Emerald Drive. And then there's another one at Garnet and Emerald Drive, where we can draw power off of. The very last one is actually one that we were comfortable and TPU was comfortable coming off of. That is in the backyard. It's close to 83rd and Garnet. It's just one house in from that. The next thing I want to talk about is claims of deviation from the engineering standards. And I've explained this to a couple of different community members. Our Engineering Standards Manual in Section 1.4 allows for a deviation, and it refers to Municipal Code Section 12.04.020. Before I touch that, though, I want to mention to you that the Engineering Standards identifies primarily aluminum and concrete poles for new development to occur and public projects. Where, the reason why that's important, that we don't have wooden power poles in at that location, is because as development comes in and they're building out roads, they would be wanting to put in wooden power poles. And when you're building a new street, like we have done on Onyx, Veterans, what we're going to be doing on Grabby Lake and other major projects, now's the time and there's the time to put in.
Mr. Bucic, where is, where is the standard? You started with the deviation from standard. Sorry. They have a slide that tells us what the standard is so that we can see that?
I do not. It's a graphical standard. It's one of the engineering design standards. And it shows on there an aluminum or a concrete pole.
Yeah, well, we don't know what it says. That seems to be the matter of contention, and we start with the exception here.
Well, what it says essentially is, when you're looking at the engineering standards, when it comes to power poles, excuse me, streetlight poles, it indicates there are two to be used, aluminum or concrete. However, in the Engineering Standards Manual, there is a Section 1.4 that references to Municipal Code Section 12.04.020. And that is where the deviation is permissible. So these are the criterion that the city engineer looks at in order to grant an application or a deviation. Typically, this is something brought forward to us by a developer when they want to do something different, and we take a close look at it. In this particular case, this is a city project, and the use of wooden poles has been a well-established city practice of residential neighborhoods when there's no other associated roadwork planned. So this has been the city practice for longer than I've been here, that's for sure, for many years. When you take a look at what the deviation does, and the deviation basically allows us to use wooden poles instead of steel, excuse me, aluminum or concrete in a residential retrofit neighborhood like what we go into in this, this community here. So what we're looking at right now under this project are essentially a couple of different options. With the contractor already let, contractor already let, contractor ready to start. Option one is, we maintain the course. We construct the poles and license contracted, contracted with Transportation Systems, Inc. Total project cost is $261,000. The poles are on site. The work is scheduled to start Wednesday on the 6th. We can cancel the current contract. We estimate right now, we have about $187,000 that we will need to pay the contractor, $187,000 for staff time that's already been exercised. We know that we cannot use the CDVG funds to cover the cost. In order to do this, we will need to supplement our $106,000 by an additional $81,000 in order to cancel the current contract. If we cancel the current contract and redesign and rebid the project, our current estimate is, including the $187 for counseling, is $695,000 to put in aluminum poles, buried power in this neighborhood. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney to talk about the legal parameters.
The legal parameters begin with the contract. This is a contract that was authorized and signed off earlier this year. And the terms of the contract are binding. We've agreed to it. There was a question at one point, having to do with that timing, as to whether or not that made for any kind of a foothold in saying that the contract hadn't been followed. And as explained by the Public Works Director, the COVID situation creates a lot of grace for people not being wholly timely. And in this case, it affected both the direct contractor and his supply chain. And we do not believe that we would have been successful trying to hold them to a timeline. And for that reason, we actually agreed to the start date that was referenced by the Public Works Director. So that takes us to the next question of what does the contract provide for? There is provision in the contract to amend the contract. The catch is that when you have a bid contract, you bid for a scope of work. And to the degree that you amend your contract into a different scope of work, if it's different enough, you could draw challenges that you didn't bid the true work. And so I, based on what I'm seeing of this, I think that the amendments would result in a wholly different agreement. As I understand, the work that would have to be done for the different kind of poles, it's actually a different sort of project. So that's not a preferred option. Can we terminate the contract? You can absolutely terminate the contract. You can terminate the contract on 15 days' notice. In this instance, there would not be fault on the part of the contractor. And so the costs outlined by your Public Works Director are accurate to the, I didn't do the figures part, but as far as whether or not the city would bear the cost, the city is the one that would bear the cost. And to the degree that the money that's been used to pay the contractor was intended for the project, so in other words, a grant or CDVG funds or something like that, we probably would be in trouble trying to use those funds for a project that we then canceled. So that's the legal parameters. And we each would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Take down the screen save or screen share, excuse me. Questions from council? Mr. Whalen? You're muted.
Deputy Mayor, it sounds like you are unmuted, although the volume is extremely low. I don't know if you have an option to turn it up at all.
Can't hear you. Now you're muted on the app. You may be muted on your own computer, on your own mic. Put the bar on lower right. Nothing coming through. Okay, Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Very well.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions, and this will be open to either Mr. Bucic or Ms. Lockner. First of all, CDVG, I imagine, comes with a certain number of standards as to First of all, CDVG I imagine comes with a certain number of standards as to citizen input and whatnot. And we have the regular CDVG process. But in your mind was, th- there seems to have been a lack of communication here with the neighborhood. Um, and maybe that's on us because we, we approved it, uh, some time ago. Were those, the, were the standards that CDVG set up for citizen input followed in this case?
I'll take a shot at that. We follow this, young, this, pretty matter.
Yeah, um, actually, tha- thank you, Mr. Bucic. Um, Councilor Bulkey, uh, first of all, um, I own the, uh, lack of community outreach to the community on, 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 on the project. So, um, that's on us. That's certainly not on the mayor and the council. Um, secondly, as far as, uh, following the CDVG protocols and federal regulations, the, the answer to that is yes, that's done through the development of the consolidated plan, the five-year consolidated plan, which then is subsequently reviewed annually, um, by this body and held public hearings for all CDVG projects, including funds that are allocated in support of, um, of streetlights. So the short answer to your question is, is yes, Councilmember Bulkey.
So, so, so normally, wha- what have we done in other cases? The, the Lakeview neighborhood or the Southgate neighborhood was mentioned and that was a big project, uh, in putting in lights. Wha- what kind of community outreach was done in that case that wasn't done in this case? Or have we done them all the same?
So when it comes to streetlights, it's kind of like filling potholes. We've shown up and installed streetlights and people have been very, very happy. Um, this has been a bit of an anomaly, um, where the folks didn't, well, they don't want the, the streetlights that are being proposed. And we, we understand now why. Um, you know, the considerations that they're bringing up were ones that we were not aware of at the time. But in the past, um, we have simply gone out and whether working with PSE or, uh, Lakeview Light and Power and Tacoma Public Utilities, um, we've gone on, installed the streetlights and, uh, again, been very, very well received by the community.
Okay. So Mr. Bucic explained to me, because in other parts of Oakbrook, the utilities are undergrounded completely. There are no poles, pretty much at all. So in this part, there are not underground utilities. The electricity runs on those poles be mid, kind of mid-block, it looks like almost.
The, the power lines actually run behind all the houses. And where you see them crossing the street, that's because they're jumping over to the other part of the development. And you're correct, the other part of Oakbrook, the part we haven't even looked at yet, all the power and everything is underground. But we also know that all the transformers and the power lines are running along the road dead. So they won't be going behind houses. What we're going to do out there, I can't tell you right now. We haven't started exploring that.
Okay, so, but, but in this neighborhood, unlike the, the other parts of Oakbrook, there, there are no wires running out in the street, even underground.
Neither out in the street other than crossings nor underground.
Okay. So, so there are poles. Let's say we, we go forward with this project. We put them in. The concern then would be other people want to get in there, right? So here come the cell phone guys. Here come the cable guys. Here come the, I don't know who else guys, and they want to put stuff on our poles. So the concern then in the neighborhood is I've already got poles in my backyard that are full of wires. I really don't want them in my front yard. You're bringing, you're stringing one wire presumably.
Right.
But what assurances do I have that in fifteen or twenty years, I don't have seven or eight more wires on there?
Well, that's a, that's a very good question. I suppose I would answer that by saying the only ones who would want to run off these poles might be a five G network. And these are small poles. They're not the big ones that, that would be desirable. I don't know what's going to happen in fifty or twenty years with telecommunications. Um, would they have any wires at all and would they remain, uh, with using the, the smaller smell cell towers? Would they even want to go out into this neighborhood? Right now their focus is in basically areas like, um, Pac Highway. They have not expressed any interest, but that's today. What's going to happen in the next fifteen to twenty years, I can't tell you. All they can tell you is that the ones that we're putting up are relatively small. They're not big power poles.
So how, how tall are they in comparison to other poles?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet. The other ones are?
Well, it depends on whether they're primary power or secondary power, but they can be forty to sixty feet tall.
Right, okay. Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to let the mayor know I've received an email from Deputy Mayor Wayland. Whenever you want me to give you his questions, I'll lay them out for the council.
Okay, great. Uh, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Bucic, how many poles are we talking about, uh, putting in?
We're talking about putting in fifty-seven poles now.
In that one area?
In that one area. That's the number we have to put in in order to meet the engineering standards for, for distance, maximum distance between the poles as well as the illumination standards for roadways.
And how many are going to be connected to the existing pole? I mean, how many? I know you got one wire running. So how far do you get through the community with the one pole that's there?
Um, if I could bring the graphic up again, I can show you. So I believe you're asking about this one T, well, see, we had a TPU pole down here at Oakbrook and Emerald, and that pole is going to be powering one, two, three, four lights. We have another TPU pole here at, um, Garnet and Emerald, and that's going to power three, four, five, six, seven more lights. We have another pole that's here on the corner, all the way across at seventy-six, approximately seventy-eight. That's going to power quite a few. You can see that's got a long run to it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. That one alone is going to power twenty-two. But the other one that's in the backyard up here on Garnet and eighty-third, you can see that that has, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen poles on it. The only one that's quote unquote outside the neighborhood is this one here on Phillips Drive in the upper right-hand corner. And that's going to, uh, that would light up the north, I call the northeast quadrant of the graphic.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, this might be for a city attorney. Uh, should we, uh, leave it at, since we cancel this project and something happens with that pole, how is the city beheld accountable?
Uh, Councilmember Moss and members of the council, if I understand your question correctly, I'm, I'm hearing you ask what happens to a partially done project.
Yes.
We leave it as it is. Um, I would say that we bear the same responsibility for those poles that we would bear if the project went full tilt. I- if, if it's not in adequate condition to serve its purpose, we would be responsible for it. Um, if it is, you know, in good enough shape to provide whatever service it's supposed to provide at the point that it's been completed, we would need to maintain it as we would any other pole. So it's sort of you play it as you find it. If we decided to cancel the contract, we cancel the contract, the contractor stops work. If we have some poles that are up, I suppose we could decide whether or not we would then want to remove the poles that are erected at that point. But if they are up there, um, we're going to be responsible for them the same as if we'd let the project go full tilt.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, I go to Mr. Wayland's questions.
All right. Let me see if I can, if he's pulled up. Two questions from Councilmember Wayland and they're related and I'm happy to repeat them as needed. Uh, number one, do we meet the CDVG census tract requirements for this upper middle-class neighborhood in Oakbrook? And two, if we need to, can we utilize the poles elsewhere for our overall street lighting program? And I think those are, uh, the CDVG census tract requirements would be for people who work with CDVG more than I do. So either the manager, possibly the public works director. And the second one, um, would be for the public works director as to where else we might be able to use the poles.
Uh, Mr. Kaufield.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, so the answer to the first question that Deputy Mayor Wayland had is, 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 is yes. Um, that is something that was, um, facilitated through our CDVG, uh, program folks. And, um, it is that, that's, I think that's the last census tract in Lakewood. Um, that meets the criteria to use CDVG funds for streetlights. And as far as why the federal government has identified it the way they have, I, I don't, I don't have an answer on my fingertips for that.
So I, I'd add that it surprised me, uh, but if you look at the census tract, it isn't, uh, limited to Oakbrook. It goes down toward, uh, Stilton Boulevard and it takes in a lot of apartments. So, uh, income averages and demographics won't be the same as they would be if it was limited to homeowners in Oakbrook. Mr. Branstadter.
Uh, the second question had to do with use of the poles. Uh, if, if they were not used in this project, are there other places in the city's overall street lighting program? And I think that's more a question for the public works director, if he has an answer to that.
Well, prior to this issue, I would have said yes. Now I'm not sure. Um, as I indicated before, the city's practice has been to put in wooden poles in residential neighborhoods as part of our standard practice. If we change that, then I might have fifty-seven poles. I got to figure out what to do with. They don't have a lot of restock value. They're, uh, the bare cost is nine hundred dollars each. Um, it's all the rest that pertinences, the delivery materials, supplies that go along with it to drive the prices up. So if we decide that we're no longer going to be using wooden poles and no longer use as, as a viable alternative, then the answer would be no. I might be able to wholesale into another jurisdiction, but I can't guarantee you that.
Yeah, I would, I would just add, you know, the, the, the only real potential option would be, um, yeah, we could, maybe not wholesaling, but actually surplus them to, um, another governmental agency or another agency. Um, also, I'd just like to add, we, we also would need to find a place to store them, which you know, as a, as an organization, we don't have too many locations. So that would be a challenge as well. So we'd probably want to turn pretty quickly on, on quite frankly, getting rid of them.
I also have fifty-seven lights.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Mayor. Um, Mr. Bucic, uh, while we're pulling power off of TPU poles and the TPU poles with two exceptions were already adjacent to the roadway, um, are we putting lights on those poles as a part of the project? Or are all the lights going to go on new poles?
If the lights are in the subdivision, then yeah, we'll be putting new lights as long as they're not already covered by the other lights in close proximity from the way we have to lay it out.
Okay, so while we've got fifty-seven poles, we're getting sixty lights?
I'd have to go back and, and confirm that.
Okay. Uh, s- second thing is, is that this is not the only neighborhood where power lines run behind the houses on easements. Uh, um, you're behind, um, and you mentioned Southgate. That's a neighborhood where that same situation exists?
We were able to put power to the poles as you saw in that one graphic. Yes, the, the poles are put in the ground and the wires are run aerial and there are some areas just around the periphery where the power is out the front of the street and the area will tap into. But those are historic projects. I don't have much knowledge about them.
And, and power lines that run behind the houses or through, th- they're, they're running through, there, there are easements for utility easements that allow those, uh, uh, existing power lines, uh, there do. Is there any requirement for an easement for the overhead lines that we're envisioning that would power streetlights?
No. All, all of the work that we're doing is within the city right of way. And that's been, that's been a little bit of a, um, a clarification issue for the property owners. Some of them have claimed that we're putting power poles in their property. I've had to explain to them, no, all the work that we're doing, including the aerial lines, are staying within the right of way. That this is a common problem that we have. Every time we do a road project, people believe that their property runs right up to the asphalt. It does not. Um, there was a recent article in the Connections Magazine helping people to understand, do you know where your property lies? Because we're having these issues, uh, on road projects, all of the work that we're doing is staying within the public right of line.
And, um, do we have any other neighborhoods other than along arterials where we've installed other than wooden poles to, in order to put in streetlights?
No, not to my knowledge. Um, again, keep in mind, I haven't been here but two and a half years. So if there were some, I'm not aware of. Uh, since we've, since I've been here, all the work that we put in metal poles has been where we did a complete road rebuild project.
So this neighborhood wasn't, isn't being treated any differently than the neighborhoods where we've already installed lights? And if we were to change and underground and put aluminum poles in this neighborhood, is that possible that we're then setting a precedent for neighborhoods we haven't gotten to yet?
I, Councilmember Branstadter, I think that's a very good question. Um, in previous, two years ago, from the Southgate, I did have a conversation with a gentleman who felt like his community was getting short shrift because they weren't getting the big metal holes, underground power. Uh, that other neighborhoods that were getting it. And I explained to him, no, that is not in fact the case. Typically, our projects go and hang streetlights on existing wooden poles that are out there. But the only time we really put in the metal poles and underground is when we're doing a road project where the vast majority of the funding is coming from grant agencies. Um, typically those are covered at like eighty-six and a half percent of the total project cost.
And, and with respect to Oakbrook, uh, where Councilmember Bulkey mentioned and that most of the rest of Oakbrook, uh, utilities are, are, are already undergrounded because they're newer, the newer portions. And the undergrounded electrical utilities, uh, are in the right of way or immediately adjacent to it. So as we moved on to put streetlights in other sections of Oakbrook, that that there, is that something where we would also use wooden poles or would because things are already undergrounded, is it, would we be not deviating from the standards and using aluminum or concrete pole?
That's a very good question. I was asked that question by one of the residents and my answer to him will certainly be the same to you is there's a lot of design, design decisions that need to be made. There's a lot of investigation needs to be done. Uh, for a long period of time, we didn't think we were going to be able to put the streetlights in there at all because all the transformers were put in back in the day in the sixties and the seventies. They couldn't handle the output for the streetlights at that time. Now we have LEDs, LED lights. We have confirmed that we don't have to do that very expensive transformer work. But we haven't gotten to the point where we're looking at what kind of poles are going to be put in there. I think if it wasn't for this conversation and the council direction, uh, we would be looking at wooden poles because the power's underground and we could tap into it. We'd probably go underground power to those poles. If the power was too far away for each one of the poles, then we'd probably ring, bring power to first one. Then we string lights, uh, and wires rather, um, between pole to pole. That would be the norm as a retrofit for streetlights in an existing community. If the long-term goal was to put the, the sidewalks in like we did on Onyx all the way through the community as a big loop, then we would incorporate streetlights similar to the ones we put on Onyx into that project and go after funding to do that. All the side streets would more than likely have the wooden poles with the power running between them.
Okay, so there is really canceling this project and redesigning and putting it off into the future where we have a, wouldn't really result in a significantly different design for the whole of Oakbrook. We, we, it would probably still be, unless we decide to treat Oakbrook different than the rest of the city, we'd still be looking at wooden poles for residential streets. Whereas the feeder streets like Onyx and Zircon and maybe 97th would be the ones that wouldn't qualify for something else.
That is correct. Barring any direction changes, the program would go out there and anticipate putting in wooden poles in the community. As, just like we've done for the rest of the, the city.
And there was a previous question about liability and the status of poles already erected. And, but I understood from your presentation that work was gonna start later this week.
That's right.
Does that mean that there are no poles actually already erected?
There are no poles in the ground. They're going to start putting poles in the ground on Wednesday. The contractors indicated that the total work will take seven days. That's poles, lights, wires, everything.
So the city attorney indicated that there's a 15-day notice to terminate the contract. So are we able to do that and not have the contractor doing the work that he expects to finish within 15 days?
I'm going to allow the city attorney to, to speak to that one.
But Councilmember Branstadter, members of the council, typically with a reasonable contractor, and I have no reason to doubt that this contractor's been anything other than reasonable. If you tell them that you are issuing your notice and it doesn't, under the contract, take effect for 15 days, they're not likely to make a pointless effort to put poles in the ground. That won't alleviate us from having to pay for the materials that they've acquired in reliance on this agreement. But I, I sincerely doubt that they would squeeze in those seven days before the 15th day runs. Not to say that they couldn't. I just, I can't imagine why they would if we gave them notice as quickly as we could. But under the contract, for example, if they've ordered something that came in during those 15 days that they then had to pay for, we're on the hook for that within the 15 days. So that's, that's how I see the 15 days playing out. And the hand is up on behalf of Deputy Mayor Whalen whenever, but I'll wait for the other folks.
Like, well, I'm done, Mayor.
And we'll go to Ms. Farmer.
I am actively being texted by my neighbors right now and, and they have questions. I have questions. So I would like to first go back to the, the slide where it talked about the funding. And I want to make sure that I, that I understand correctly. If, if we cancel the contract, we're not out $695,000. We're out the $187. And then it would, and then to put in aluminum poles and to underground the power, it would cost $695 roughly in addition to the $187 that we would lose. No.
No, the $69, the $695 includes the $187 sunk cost. So to cancel the contracts, about $187, the sunk cost, it may be a little bit less, but it's not going to be a whole lot less. And then to redesign and re-advertise and award another project with underground and aluminum for that with the $187 gets us up to the $695,000, $695,000.
Okay, which would obviously push the timeline out, but it would give us, it would give us more time to have a, a conversation with the neighbors. And from what I understand, in the 16, 17 years I've lived here in Oakbrook, the city has been very communicative on, on projects like this. So, so I'm assuming that we would do that in the future. So there, so there's no other, with the current configuration and with, and with TPU providing the power, there's no other configuration other than to crisscross it down those three streets, which are pretty long?
No. Unfortunately, I've, I've been trying to work with the project manager. He's looked at all the different design considerations. And essentially, this is, this is the best that we can get to get the, the lighting standards where we need them for the roadway.
From what I'm hearing from my neighbors, is it's less concern about the wooden poles and more concern about the lines being strung kind of hither, hither nither down the middle of some of those streets and then obviously some of the backyard stuff. There are quite a few wooden poles in this neighborhood already that almost fade into the background because they're orderly, they're on the side of the street and, and you live here long enough and you don't notice them as much. But if there's something going in right in front of you, that's, that's more of a concern. Actually, I think those are, those are my biggest questions. Thank you.
Ms. Moss.
Good, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, there's some citizens that are trying to call in and they haven't been able to or they haven't been able to join the Zoom. So my phone too has been going off a lot. And the bottom line that I'm getting is that they don't want them, period. One of them says, Onyx, the wires are metal and underground. We still don't want them. So the bottom line is they don't want anything to change in that community. Several, several, I've got about 15 text messages with the same message. So just wanted to make sure that you understood. They don't want it either way. Thank you.
Mr. Whalen. No, can't hear you now. Wait, hey, what if you unplug your, unplug your earphones?
All right, Council, Deputy Mayor Whalen did send me the following question and it's directed at the Public Works Director. "If we proceed as scheduled, do we have some flexibility to work with owners to ensure the most optimum placement on or within the right of way adjacent to their property? For instance, the picture reflects some poles between property lines. Others seem to be in the middle of a lot."
We have been doing that with property owners, been coming forward, asking us to move them. That's in part the reason why we had to add an additional pole because we, we had to move, we couldn't move it further away. We had to move it a little bit closer to the property line. And that required us to shift the whole string of lights, which means we needed yet another light in order to make up. So we didn't have a big dark, dark gap in between the light strings. So yes, we're, we're happy to take a look at that, but I can't promise you anything. We're pretty much running these lights as far apart as we can get them. There is one, in fact, that actually is further than it should be, but we have no other choice on it.
So you indicated there was another area in town that had lines, power lines running behind the lots between buildings or between, or between homes. When, and we've put streetlights in there, is that correct?
Actually, I didn't indicate that. I knew of areas where we had them running behind the homes. What I indicated was that there's areas where we have put power, put the streetlights in front and run the lines between them. There very well may be power poles running behind homes. We have three different power providers. The community has developed over the last 70 years plus years. So we are constantly being surprised at what we find when we go out and we start looking at the neighborhoods.
So do we know of any other, is, my question is really, is this, this unique? Because, you know, obviously wasn't considered, at least considered to be important. It wasn't brought to the council's attention. I certainly didn't know, not living there, that power lines were behind the homes. I've seen that in some different communities. And it was kind of the, I think, the poor man's way to hide the, the unsightly nature of power lines running down the street in front of homes. It seems to defeat the purpose of your zigzag lines in front of the homes. So my question is very directly is, do we know of any other place in Lakewood where this situation exists with power lines behind the homes as the standard? And if so, have we ever put streetlights in, retrofitted in front of the homes?
Hey, Anderson, unfortunately, I can't give you a definitive answer. We'll have to do some research into that and get back to you.
So we, the definitive answer is we don't know if there are any. So this could be unique.
I do not know, speaking here right now.
And I had a question for perhaps Ms. Walker. We receive CDBG CV3 money that seems to have great flexibility. Is it available for economic development activities such as streetlights? Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not know yet because we have to work in partnership with Tacoma to have an update to our respective consolidated plans. And Tacoma's the lead on that, so we're kind of waiting on them. And hopefully, that's something we can address sometime in first quarter. So to be determined. Don't know at this point in time.
Is there federal guidance on the maximum flexibility on that at this point?
I don't have any information on that at this point in time, Mayor. We have not gotten into it. We're still trying to figure out a time to work with Tacoma to be able to consider those options and bring something forward to this body.
Still a possibility. And was, Mr. Bucic?
I just wanted to get back to you on one question. Troy Pockspitsky is actually watching the meeting and he texted me and said the one area he knows for sure that has the power lines behind, behind the homes is in fact the Southgate neighborhood. So this isn't, this area is not the unique area for the city of Lakewood.
And do they have streetlights there now?
Yes, we put in wooden poles and we ran lines.
Now, did the lines run down the street or did they come out from behind?
The lines run down the street.
Ms. Walker.
And this is a question again from Deputy Mayor Whalen, and it's directed to the Public Works.
Can you hear me at all?
Yes, yes. And I relinquish my role as Deputy Mayor Whalen for the evening.
I had to bring my 14-year-old in to fix my, whatever volume setting I had there. Sorry about that. Mr. Bucic, sorry to, to pester you with all the questions, but it's important to kind of make sure we've crossed every T and dotted our I's here. Of the 187,000 that might be, that would be a sunk cost, you mentioned the poles are about 900 a piece, so you got 57,000 worth of poles that may or may not be able to be surplus. The lights we have ordered, I understand that, and they could likely be used again if we were to choose the aluminum poles, right?
They cannot be aluminum poles. That, that's a different lighting setup. So we would need to basically pair them with wooden poles elsewhere in the community.
Okay. So then of the 187 minus the 56 grand for poles, where, where's the rest of that cost? Is it the lights themselves and some labor?
You've got lights, you've got wires, you've got, you got any junctions that need to be done? You've got sunk costs from the contractor for time, materials. I mean, they're trying to manage the project. The, the 180,000, I think, is on the high end, but it's not going to be too far on the high end.
Okay.
I don't want to low volume and tell you it's going to be $40,000 and come back and tell you it's 180 because it's not going to be 40.
No, I get it. I get it. Okay. Thank you for being my scribe and mime, Ms. Walker.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, I had one last question. There, there was a, a number of the folks that spoke to us during public comment and who sent me comments maintained that this is an extremely safe community with both respect to traffic and crime. And those are two metrics that are have, have driven us to having a citywide streetlight program. And, and while I kind of expect that those are perceptions of individual residents, do we have any real perception about how this particular neighborhood would benefit on the safety side from, from these lights?
I'm afraid I'm not tracking that information, but we could, we could look at the crime distribution across the city. If you're ready to determine it. Only thing I can tell you is anecdotally from people I know who live in Oakbrook, they say their biggest problem right now is from, their word is not mine, but tweakers coming in, breaking into cars and stealing things. I do not know if this neighborhood experiences problems.
Don't seem to have the perception that this area is immune from that. Then and with, Ms. Walker, with respect to options, there an option to ask the contractor not to proceed for a period of time while we do some evaluation in terms of the design and, and, and other things? Or are we really at a point because they plan to begin working this week that we've either, we've got to decide now?
Well, well, Councilmember Branstadter, yes, you opened a can of worms there. You've got someone who has, in reliance on this contract, ordered all the materials they need. And they're basically, as the Public Works Director said, ready to go on Wednesday. You can always ask about some kind of delay, but that presumes this contractor doesn't have anything else going on in those coming weeks. If they, what little I know from working contracts over the years is that these guys line up their work. You know, so I, I do think you would be opening quite a can of worms, but you can ask them anything. I think it's going to come at, at a cost. I would defer to the Public Works Director if he has anything to add on that.
Thank you. You, you nailed the two big ones, which is if the contractor has other work lined up, then we go from the first in queue to the last in the queue. If the contractor has to delay work and incur costs, then now we're going to pay claims for cost delays on top of anything else that we have. Mind you, we have not spoken to the contractor about this. This is not a conversation we have with them prior to getting clear direction and determination whether we're going to cancel the contract or not. There's not a lot we can modify. We can't change the poles. We can't go underground with this contract. So we might be able to move a pole here and there, but it's, it's not the material to change the project. That would be the wooden poles and the streetlights and the overhead wiring.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Coffield.
So Mayor, what is the council's desire on this? Because again, really, there's three primary options here. One is for the council to take no action this evening, meaning that the contract will move forward and the work will begin on Wednesday. Number two, for the council to take action this evening to, if, if, if you've come to the conclusion that you don't want to put up the wooden poles and/or the overhead wiring, then it's recommended that you take action to either rescind, I don't know what the right term would be, the city attorney can help there, but basically cancel the contract. And then, and then that leaves open the door on whether or not, as part of a future budget process, the council wants to consider the council wants to consider moving forward with different options within the community to install streetlights, including metal poles and undergrounding.
Any thoughts from council? I'm concerned that there appears to have been a lack of public outreach. It does change the character to have power lines zigzagging down the street. Without the public outreach, it's hard to make a judgment as to whether the dozen to 20 people who've vocally opposed this for one reason or another are a substantial portion of the population of that area or, and whether their objections are to lights, where the lines are or the type of pole. Like, you know, I'm left in, personally in a position where it's a lot of conjecture on my part. Ms. Farmer.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm, I'm feeling very uncomfortable right now because I don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision. I would prefer to pause, but it sounds like there, that isn't an option right now. It sounds like we need to if we wanted to pause, we would end up having, having to cancel. So if those are my only two options, I, I would prefer we cancel. I do want to say that I very, very much appreciate and support that the city has a commitment and a vision to have the entire city in streetlights by a future date. And I very much support that. Infrastructure is what local government does. But this city has shown itself to be accommodating and, and friendly and, and willing to negotiate. So I would, I would advocate that we, that we take that tack.
Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor, I'm like Ms. Farmer, I, you know, wish we could spend a little bit more time thinking about it, but we're at a point in time of where we, we need to do something in terms of a decision that now our experience in the city has been neighborhoods that have benefited from having their streetlights installed have uniformly come to appreciate them, to be able to go and do that. That this is not a neighborhood that we are uniquely targeting to have single strands of wire between streetlight poles because we've done that elsewhere. And in fact, we're, we have is a neighborhood that wants to be treated differently than other neighborhoods have been. And as Mr. Bucic said, even within Oakbrook, there's still likely to be some places in Oakbrook where the way to get to it is going to be to put in wooden poles and do that. Wooden poles don't seem to be a big issue to me because there are wooden poles and lots of trees in this neighborhood already, and so they're not that out of place. You know, I think that the the problem really has been that the neighborhood doesn't feel like they were involved in the, in the in the discussions, although it is also clear that some, some in the neighborhood were because Public Works negotiated placement of poles and things with certain property owners. Kind of reminds me about when we went and cut down trees around Wahop Lake and where everybody had never heard about it before, depending on what wave of information they were in. I don't want to get, you know, if, if we were to pass on this project, we're probably moving this neighborhood to the back of the line. And so given the way that the options are, I would go ahead and tell the contractor to move, move forward and make, if there are some individual pole placement negotiations to be made, to be able to, to do that. And I think that in the end, the majority of the neighborhood will appreciate getting the streetlights.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am really out of congo myself with this one because my phone's still going off, I'm sorry. But if I'm happy that we have made the decision to do what we are doing, but we missed a step in there and that was to notify the, to do the public outreach, which, which creates a problem for for me to make a good decision, a firm decision. So I think I'm leaning toward canceling the contract on that one. So, thank you.
Can I ask one more clarifying question, Mayor?
Mr. Whalen.
Mr. Bucic, some of the concern seems to be the crisscrossing of wires back and forth, maybe on some of the streets. If you were to change, if you could, the design to just take one of those wires, you know, on the poles on one side of the street, kind of like you've done on Elwood across from Fort Silicon Park, right? Those are wooden poles with lights and they have a single strand of wire. It goes in the front of the homes. I think that was done somewhat recently. I drove by it just the other day to look at it. Is that a possibility if there's the concern, again, if poles are placed, if they're not in the middle of the lot? So that if you're looking out of your bay window in your home, you don't want to look at a pole, but if it's on, you know, the property edge, if you would, between lots, then you don't see it as much. And then the overhead line issue would be minimized if it's not crisscrossing across the street. There are very few locations from that diagram that look like they crisscross. Or could you reduce the number of poles and still meet the lighting, the rough lighting standard, given the fact that we have none now? And having some would be better than none.
Well, to answer your, your second question, can we reduce the number of poles? Not really. I have not, not having an effective street lighting program out there. I'm looking at the graphic off on the side here. If you'd like, I'd be happy to show it to you, but Troy has done a pretty good job. Let me bring this up if I may.
Yeah, at the north of the diagram, you got the crisscrossing back and forth down the street.
Try it again. I, I'm sorry. I blew that one as far as the screenshot. There we go. Let me see if I grabbed the right one this time so that I could see it. So can you see the, see the graphic now?
I do. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm only one who is having problems moving it where I can see it.
Yeah, I had to have a 14-year-old help me with volume.
My 14-year-old's 27 now. I'm not, I'm too embarrassed if I have to. So if you take a look at it, you see that the poles go zigzag across the street so that we can distribute the light evenly around the neighborhood.
I don't have the diagram.
We don't have the diagram.
You don't have it now?
Nope.
We have page 29.
That's obviously not what I
There you go.
There you go.
You got it now?
Yes, small version.
All right, that's the problem with moving it across my screen from one to the other one.
Okay.
So the idea and the design here is to have the, the lights going from one side to the other side. So they distribute the light across the, the roadway as you're going for the drivers in two different directions. I could talk to Troy and see if it's possible from a light perspective to have them run down just one side of the street. I think it's going to be a challenge, but I'm not going to tell you it can't be done. But we have also worked with a couple of different property owners to try to make sure the poles are right on the property lines where the two properties come together. So it's right on the corner. So it's not in front of their homes. There's still a couple that are a little bit challenging, like pole number 57. I kind of sad if you can see that. That's a little bit of a challenge.
Obviously you could bring that back maybe to the property line or drop it altogether, you know, if you didn't need it.
Yeah, pole 57 is actually the one that we added because we moved pole number 47 back here towards the very beginning. The other issue that Troy's trying to avoid is there's trees out there and some of the trees are large enough that we can't, we can't get around them. So we'd have to cut them down in order to stay all on one side of the road. So yeah, I'm watching Councilmember Farmer saying, no, that's not a good idea. I agree. We've, we take down enough trees on our road projects as it is that where we can avoid that, especially these mature firsts. We try to not take them down wherever we can.
Well, here's, while you got that up, here's my sort of anecdotal comment. I mean, I don't see us ever undergrounding the wires out there in this area without a huge significant budget swing. I mean, there's just no way we're going to do it unless we unless they wanted to do an LID project on their own and maybe we help contribute to that. I'm just speculating down the road. But that would be a horrendous expense in an existing neighborhood. Unless we were doing a full streetscape and sidewalk project to underground any wires. So then you're left with either nothing or some wires.
That's pretty much my conclusion too, Councilmember Whalen.
Yeah.
And considering, considering the sidewalks that we need throughout the community and what has been discussed with council about the connectivity of sidewalk and how expensive sidewalks are, I don't see sidewalks coming into this community anytime in the foreseeable future and beyond. So really what it comes down to is it, it'll be over half a million dollars for this community alone to put in underground power and aluminum poles, which is different from any other location in the community that's not doing a major road project. So it would be treating this community different from everybody else. We've tried to minimize the amount of impact as far as the trees, existing vegetation, putting it in front of people's homes. There might be some different tweaks that we can do, but essentially what we're seeing is what we can do within this community.
Yeah.
One other thing I wanted to mention to help illustrate this is that one of the other driving factors is pedestrians. Dark streets, crossings of dark streets for kids and for pedestrians, that's one of the drivers for the streetlights. So people can see when they're walking through the community and so the cars can see them and, and nobody gets injured. Now, I can't tell you how many injuries, injuries are out here. I'm just saying that that is another important feature of the implementation of streetlights.
Well, I know you guys have done yeoman's work at doing your best to design it. You know, now we're a little bit of making lemonade out of lemons. And so one wonders if you could do some, but not all, just like on the major intersections within this neighborhood. Maybe not down, you know, six, seven in a string along one side or the other, certainly not crisscrossed. But that would provide some light on some of the corner intersections that might accommodate some traffic and safety concerns of people walking in the dark.
Well, Councilmember Whalen, the, the challenge we get is now we're trying to apply our, our perspective and we're not treating it the same as the rest of the community by giving the same degree of lighting for the transportation and the pedestrians.
I hear you.
In other neighborhoods, they'd be asking us, well, why didn't you give me a light here? I almost got hit by a car. I was walking. I went from light to dark. Someone couldn't see me. So it, it really is a bit of a no-win situation.
Yeah, it is.
What we're applying here is the standards that the city has been doing across the community for a long time.
Yeah. Of course, we hear from some neighbors that they don't want any lights, which is, you know, one or two persons' opinion. I get it.
There have been a couple of circumstances where a neighbor calls and they're just adamantly opposed to streetlights. They live in a cul-de-sac and my answer to them has been in the past, you get all the rest of your neighbors to agree not to put streetlights in and call me back and we can talk. I never hear from them again because in general, we get nothing but positive responses from installation of streetlights. Keeping in mind that also in general, we are able to put streetlights on existing wooden poles, whether it be PSC poles, TPU poles, or legacy light and power poles.
No, I understand. I mean, I would be one. I'd love to have some more streetlights myself down in Mount Tacoma Drive here because it's pretty darn dark.
We'll get that.
Well, I, I've kind of raised some questions for additional thought. It sounds like we've got a few folks who are interested in canceling the contract. Us who are concerned about it, about what to do. It's, it's a tough deal to make a decision in the face of three days or whatever with the comment we've received in the nice briefing tonight. It's challenging to throw $187,000 down the drain.
Mr. Bucic.
Sorry, but could I please ask that the city attorney inform me what process I need to go through to cancel this? Because we have a valid contract executed by the council. And if we're going to cancel it, then I need the council to do a motion of some form, I think, to cancel it. I don't know how we're going to go about doing that tonight.
Well, that's, that's correct. And I'm sorry I didn't insert it earlier. I wanted to make sure that the council had had a chance to sort of explore the different parameters of this. This is not a monodimensional issue. So if the council is leaning in the direction of terminating the contract and that is provided for in the contract, the council would need to make formal action that would be in the form of a motion to terminate the contract. If that carries with the council, it would then provide the direction necessary for us to give a 15-day written notice to the contractor under the contract. My interpretation is that this is a termination of the contract without fault of the contractor. We would therefore be responsible for the costs that have been detailed in your earlier discussions, but it would end the performance. As we've discussed, the 15 days is not in time for when he's supposed to be putting the poles in, but writing the letter to terminate the contract would be a fairly quick exercise and we would be apprising the contractor almost immediately. So I think their issue would be getting payment for anything they've put into it to date, not so much whether or not they get to go out there on Wednesday and put the poles in. So that's what we would be looking at, whether they would reach further for any past opportunities. Other jobs they didn't take for this time and so forth, that would probably be subject to some sort of negotiation. But I think the costs that have been outlined for the council are, are pretty close to what you would expect to see. In terms of timing of that, how quickly could we do it? Because Lakewood is an optional code city and you are at a regular meeting tonight, you do have some flexibility as to when to make that motion. That motion could be made tonight. That is not typically how the council operates, but you are not forbidden from operating that way. If you wish to make the motion, it's as simple as making a motion to terminate this specific contract and we go from there. In looking at that, we explored other options. This is not a reconsideration. It's not a rescission of an earlier motion. It's actually termination of an existing contract that you previously authorized. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the process. At one point I was thinking of scripting the motion, but the motion's really as simple as saying that you want to terminate this particular contract.
And just to clarify, Ms. City Attorney, this would take four affirmative votes?
That's correct. Right now you're a council of six. And so in normal circumstances with seven, you would need four. With the six, you also need four. It needs to carry by majority. And so if you tie, then you're, then you're keeping the contract. I'd be happy to answer any other questions the council may have. And you're not obligated to do anything tonight. Just understand the consequences of making the motion result in some of the costs that we talked about. If it passes, the consequences of not taking action means the polls are going in Wednesday.
All right, with that, I think we've discussed this rather thoroughly, unfortunately, in a limited timeframe with less information than we'd hope to have. So I'd give council an opportunity to make a motion if that's the wish of two of you, we'll end up voting on it. Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will, it's with a heavy heart that I make a motion to cancel the current contract. to cancel the current contract for streetlights in Oak Brook, in that section of Oak Brook.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we cancel the pending Oak Brook streetlight contract. Is there any further discussion?
What do you think, Mayor? What do you want to do on this? Any further discussion?
Pardon?
Any further discussion from your perspective?
Yeah, it's kind of, I'm kind of a heavy heart the other way. I wish things were different, but I, what I think the deciding factor for me is that streetlights are an, an anti-crime deterrent. They do make neighborhoods safer. We have a policy to streetlight the complete city. And we realistically, we're never, not in my lifetime, at least are we gonna get to undergrounding power in Oak Brook. I wish there was another way to do it. But I, I think it's a better alternative than leaving a, a nice but aging neighborhood, which is having some problems with break-ins without streetlights indefinitely. So. Not, not an easy call. Mr. Mr. Okie.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I would, I would agree with that assessment. I'd also go back to what councilmember Branstadter said and yeah, I, I've been going back and forth on this because I just thought, well, let's just cancel it, right? But the, there are several issues with, with that. Number one, our policy is to streetlight the, the entire city. That's our policy. That's our goal. That's what we stated. Staff went out, said this is a good use of CDVG dollars. I, I think you, you cancel contracts when you feel like you've made an error. And I don't think we made an error. I, I think there's, there were issues. Clearly our outreach wasn't good enough and that's a lesson, a painful lesson. Well, I, I'm just, I, I don't, I don't, it's like, you know, pick the door and, and find out which one is the trap door and I, 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 I think we're so close to the, to this, this, the, the, that we have a valid contract with the, with the contractor. This is our policy. It's, it's, and, and I, there, there's nuances to the project that until tonight I did not understand. I, I didn't know all the, I knew there are poles there because I've driven the neighborhood. I didn't realize that you couldn't use them. Our lights on, on some of those poles, by the way, that go through the neighborhood. But I was, I didn't, I, and I, I guess I'm still, the poles are old, which that concerns me that we have old poles that TPU says, well, don't even climb up there to attach it. So, you, you know, not, not crazy about, I, you, you know, and I, and I, and I will tell you, I, when we passed this, I believed it was all gonna be all undergrounded. You know, I, I really did. I didn't know that it ran in the back. So what, what lessons learned, but really tough to, to cancel a contract that's validly put together based on our policies. I, I do worry about the legal repercussions of it. I worry about the repercussions of, of us as a city that we're not always good for our deals. I am concerned about how it's gonna look. I really am. And I, and I, and but I, I go back to what councilmember Branstadter said earlier, that I, I think people really do come to like the lights. So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Anyone else wish to make comment or argument on this motion before I call for the question?
Tom, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farmer.
I, I'll just, I'll just throw out one more thing. I, I am not concerned about the legal ramifications. Otherwise, I, I think I would have heard our city attorney advises against that. I, it sounds like we have, I completely agree. We have a valid contract. We were marching forward. And but if, but she laid out that there is a path forward for, for canceling. So, so I wanted to make that point. I, I am concerned about the future of the rest of Oak Brook. This, this is a small portion of Oak Brook that we're talking about right now. And we've got several other portions that are heavily treed, lots of trees. I'm concerned. And we, we know that we're gonna do better with public outreach and we're going to have conversations. But I'm getting the feeling that because we took this path in this portion of Oak Brook, we're not going to be able to make changes, modifications for other portions of Oak Brook. And so they're gonna be stuck with it. No decision space. Okay, that's it.
Hey. I'll call for the question. Will all in favor of the motion to terminate the contract please signify by saying aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Although I appear to have three there. I'd like the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Okie?
Nay.
Branstadter?
Nay.
Farmer?
Aye.
Moss?
Aye.
Waylon? Mayor Anderson?
Nay.
Three, three, motion fails.
I wasn't sure on Mr. Waylon's vote.
Aye, so it was a three, three.
Okay. Gotta get that fourteen-year-old back in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Motion fails. So move on with the report by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, I'd like to call online our Parks and Recreation Director to give you an, an update and an opportunity with Pierce College. They, they approached us late last year on a partnership opportunity down at Fort Silicon Park in conjunction with some fields turf improvements that we'll be undertaking in two thousand twenty-one. So with that, Ms. Dodsworth.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor of Civic Council. Happy New Year to all. I wanted to share with you tonight an update regarding the turf field project at Fort Silicon Park. Just as a quick reminder, this was an approved project in our nineteen twenty park CIP program. The city did receive an allocation from the state. It was a request with our legislative agenda two years ago. And we received resources to support this project. The cost estimate to do the four, four turf infields, and that would be the four baseball fields that are along or sport fields. We use them for baseball and softball. The four fields along Silicon Boulevard, cost estimates about one point six million to do the four infields in turf. And so we have secured one point two five million and we have, are highly ranked for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So that would secure all of the funding for us. While we were celebrating these, this project, we were approached by Pierce College because they have been on a search to build a home field for their Raiders baseball program. They are currently playing at Mount Oklahoma High School. They have played at various other locations. And they have resources to build a home field for their Raiders baseball program. Their funding comes from the students at Pierce College who have already voted to and approved the allocation of these resources. So when we were talking about doing this improvement project, they were very interested in finding out if we would be open to having them take one of the fields and enhancing it more than just doing turf infields and building a home field for their Raiders program. So they are also bringing one point six million dollars to the project based on what they have allocated. So that's what we're bringing to you tonight is the, an interlocal agreement that would be between Pierce College and the city of Lakewood. This would be the first of probably two interlocal agreements. This is a first just to make sure that everybody's in agreement that we move forward so that we can start doing real planning and you know, getting the cost estimates and all, and the timing put down for this project. So the interlocal agreement was a part of your agenda packet. Starts on page eighty-eight. And so the interlocal agreement covers, you know, a description of the project and the purpose is to just identify that we're all on the same page to move forward, what the city's responsibilities would be initially, what Pierce College's responsibilities would be, and how we would move forward with this agreement. This would be a city-owned facility. When the project is done, this improvement and investment at this site would be, the city would be the owner of this facility. Now, in future, a future ILA, we would lay out the responsibilities or the use of the facility, the, the priority use of the facility for Pierce College with scheduling and all of that. But when it is not being used for Pierce College baseball practice and games, we would be able to utilize it for tournaments, city use, leagues, et cetera. So that's really an additional benefit to the city. You know, baseball tournaments primarily are really economic in, in, provide economic impact for our community. They provide, you know, the sales of goods and services and hotel rooms and things like that. So it really is a benefit to the community. Fort Silicon Park is a site that we do look for creating economic impact to our community because of its size and location and special amenities there, while still making it available for our residents for other kinds of uses. So a draft interlocal agreement has been provided for you and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have regarding moving forward with this particular project.
Questions for Ms. Dodsworth? Mr. Waylon?
Here you, thank you for the report. I think it's great to get some partnership contribution. I am trying to understand what a, an additional one point six will buy in terms of quote-unquote facility. Because we're, we're gonna have our one point six in there. We're gonna get the new artificial turfs for the infields, which has always been our plan. You know, you talked about lighting. We just had an hour and a half on lighting. Probably could get a few extra poles if you needed. But can we get lighting here in this thing to actually enhance the viability of the tournament play that you've always wanted?
Not with these resources. We did consider lighting, you know, when we were putting together our park CIP. It is really, really expensive. And to put lighting in and not do the artificial turf improvements, what that does is it extends the use of your facility and they are currently just grass fields. So so the idea is to do this artificial turf improvement now and then look down the way at adding lights when we can write more grants or provide, make it affordable. Excuse me. I'm not even sure that Pierce College would, oh, I'm sorry.
That was our one point six on the infield artificial turf. What do we get for their one point six?
Oh, so what they will be doing is looking at creating bullpen. They'll be looking at creating fencing, batting cages. They would love to do a press box and, and more seating. They've got, I think, a bigger list of what they'd like to do than they probably have resources for. So what this one point six would do, but it would be, it would be a real home field. It's not gonna be Cheney Stadium, but it is going to be a, a definite specialty site at the park. And, but that's what they're looking at, at doing dugouts, lighting. They initially wanted to do turf for their whole field. They recognize they can't afford to do that and get the other amenities that they'd like to see there. But they'd like to create also kind of a master plan because they will do as much as they can with this one point six. It'll be a fully functioning facility. But then the idea is down the road as we make use of the facility and see how it operates, that they'd like to maybe come back and be able to make some of those other additions if, if it's viable for the site and for the use and for the timing. But
Let me ask you this. I don't recall that this level of improvement was
We can't hear you.
I don't recall whether this level of improvement was bantered about in the legacy planning process.
Yes.
If not, whether the folks who don't want us to touch a blade of grass out there are going to be upset with this level of facility improvement in the park, especially smack in the middle of it.
Well, we had considered, yeah, these kinds of improvements were considered as part of the legacy plan. We've talked about turf. We've talked about lights. We've talked about improvements to make it more viable for tournaments and activities. To say specifically a specialized home field, probably not. But this area is already what we call our active and improved area. So those folks that have really more concerns are when you're, if you were to be looking at doing this kind of improvement out in the middle of the prairie or improving an area that is already kind of a passive open space area. But this area has been designated as our active and it's already improved. So you're not, you're probably not gonna be impacting those individuals. Right now it's used for baseball. It's used as an overlay for soccer. It's used for all kinds of activities and events. We did our drive-in movies on there. So it's already a very active utilized space. So I'm not sure that that would be of a concern.
Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dodsworth, you know, I'm generally in favor of supporting Pierce College and being able to enhance their athletic program in this way to be able to go and do that. I had a question about the first paragraph of the draft MO ILA, the, the project description. And I was wondering, it says the project would include adding synthetic infield turf to four of the baseball fields, which is our plan.
Correct.
And then it talks about as well as adding a list of other things, dugouts and batting cages and backstops and spectators seating. The project description doesn't say adding those at one of the fields.
Oh.
I, I kind of got the impression that they were looking to enhance one of the four. And I would prefer that the project description be clear that way so that there's not an assumption that those things are going to go across all, all four of the fields to be able to go and do that. And the other, the other thing that I guess would raise the issue about what would people think when they see it is what's the scope that Pierce College envisions in terms of spectator seating? You know, three hundred, three thousand, I, I don't, you know, one looks and fits in there fine. The other becomes a, an out-of-place distraction. Do you have any idea what they're thinking when they say spectator seating in terms of the standards for their league?
No, I can, I can pretty have confidence that it's not three thousand. I would say it's probably closer to maybe the three hundred or the two hundred. But we can, I can clarify that. And, and again, this is really so we can start the design process. We're not gonna be doing anything in there that is going to be that we think would be really detrimental to the site. One of, there, there's four fields there. And we're looking at field number three as the site that they would be using. That was if field number one is closest to the entry, then you have field number two by the restrooms, then three, then four. And for number three, and primarily the reason for that is, is that we didn't want the first thing you saw when you pull And um, for number three, and primarily the reason for that is, is that we didn't want the first thing you saw when you pull into Fort Silicon Park is this big giant fenced ball field. It would change the feel of the park. We don't wanna do that. We wanna enhance the amenities there. Um, so, but I can clar- we can clarify that and get that information. I don't have a specific number regarding uh, seating, but we can clarify that. And also, you know, what is gonna happen there? You'll get more information on that as we do real planning and real design so you can see really what the ramifications of this partnership would involve.
Yeah, I'd like to see that and maybe just a little bit of clarifying wordsmithing of the project description and is the first of two ILAs, uh, gotta take a first step.
This, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a couple things um, that kind of got partially answered or maybe answered. So let me ask him. Actually, you know, in the, in, in the narrative in, in the, that got sent to us, I, I would disagree with that incentive, I, narrative a little bit. I think they, the, the men's team played there or practiced there in the early part of this century. They, they actually worked on that first field. We call it Field A. They actually played on that field. I don't know if they played games, but I remember that they actually spent some money to clean that field up. That's one of the reasons why it's been, that field has actually been in better condition. And I think there were bigger stands there or something at one time or another. So this is actually a return. I, I don't, and I don't remember, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if they played any games there or not, but I remember guys practicing. My kids were young. Um, so the next, the next step, how many days a year are they thinking they're gonna have to use this?
Uh, I, I don't have a specific number of days. I can give you an estimate. I can gather that information for you. Um, they do have a season. They have um, certain number of games. They practice. I can get that for you. I don't have that specific detail, but.
Kind of, kind of February to May, maybe?
Uh, probably starting in January because it goes kind of sometimes with the school season, but yeah, I would say through May.
And do they play fall ball, do you know, or?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. They probably practice, do some practicing, but mostly that's inside. You know, baseball players don't like to get wet, so they, they play inside and do workouts in the gym and the weight rooms, et cetera. So, but I can, I can get more uh, specifics for you regarding what their intended use is.
So, and, and then you were talking about the other field. So now you're talking about maybe moving the main field, really not that first field. Is that Field A, the one they used to play on, but now it's maybe Field B or down further?
Um, Field One is what we call it and that's called Charlie Peterson, the Charlie Peterson Field. That's probably what you're remembering and it is true. Pierce College did play there. In fact, they did probably make some investment. Where they used to also play and they've played and they've sort of been the stepchild that sort of moved around. But you know, at Western State Hospital where um, they had a beautiful field there. It had a press box and big stands and it was really, um, there's just an old backstop there now. And if you remember our master plan, we were gonna do a driving range there. That was the premier field, baseball field in Pierce County and everybody, and they played back there and it was, and they did invest in that facility. Um, so they played all around, but, but they did play at Pierce College. They did practice at Pierce Co- I mean, pardon me, at Fort Silicon. They did play games there and it is, for them, it feels like they're coming home because that's where they started.
So, so.
Fields, so uh, one and two were the fields that were there.
Okay, so they're gonna use the main field. The turf will be there. They're gonna, they're gonna pay to fix it up or they're gonna do their half. For practices, do you, do you see them using two or three fields or just the one, or how would that work?
Well, we would anticipate they would just use the one field. They'd be able to go out in the field and they'd have amenities around it to practice. But, you know, if nobody's out there during the time that they're using it, then we could make, you know, we'll, we'll manage the field like we manage it now. You know, we used to, Lakes High School used to rent it. Um, private schools have rented it over there. Sports, or Pierce, or pardon me, Silicon High School used to use our field. So we're used to managing people in different spots.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Councilmember Volkey, we're talking about the field would be the third field, not the second field. So that would be the one when you go past the restroom, towards the soccer fields. That would be the field you're talking about. And the reason is because the way that the fields are aligned, we don't have a clover leaf. So you have them four laid out there. There's issues with sun and glare and where the sun comes and goes. And so they would be interested in one and three, not two or four.
Okay. Thanks. I'll, I'll look that up to make sure that I know. Thank you.
So I just had a cautionary note. I think it's a great idea to do a cooperative thing like this. Uh, you know, I've always said that the, the public doesn't discern uh, what, who owns what when it comes to public property. It belongs to the public and it should be used for public purposes uh, to the, to the maximum of its utility. However, a cautionary note. Something similar was done in the reverse on South Hill at uh, Ziger Elementary. Pierce County Heritage Park or Heritage Fields where the county invested $8 million in improvements on school district land. It is the subject of probably the worst interlocal agreement ever drafted in the state of Washington. Uh, it has 25 pages of how many millimeters the grass is supposed to be long and how you trim the sides of the whatever. It has nothing to do with the business terms. Uh, what we need to make sure that we have is a clear expectation of who pays for what, who pays for cost overruns on particular elements, who pays for the maintenance, who's responsible for conducting the magnets, what the other party can do to require that. Who plays, pays for replacements, use priority, who schedules, the term of the agreement, the ownership of the property, um, and, and the, it has to be locked down. Once it's locked down, there won't be any problems, uh, because people will have clear expectations of who has ongoing responsibilities both financially and operationally. And it's, it's much easier uh, than trying to split things up or leaving them undefined to have a pure contractual relationship where one side pays and the other side owns and operates. But uh, we'll, we'll leave, leave that to you. Just the cautionary note, I, I will be particularly concerned about making sure all those details are in before we approve the, 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 the real interlocal agreement, which has gotta be the second one. Uh, because that, it's, it's, it's a I think I was complimentary when I said it's the worst interlocal agreement as for the state of Washington because I don't think it even can be defined as an interlocal agreement. It has so many missing elements. Uh, it just happens to be for a baseball field, among other things. The uh, got one more hand up, Mr. Branstadter again.
No, you just didn't take it down.
Okay. Ms. Farmer.
Uh, a, a, a good interlocal agreement notwithstanding, I think this is a great project. I uh, anticipate the economic development. It will bring uh, the, the extra uh, excitement already to that, to that space. Um, I'm curious, and I spoke with the city manager earlier about this today. Is there, has there been any consideration for wear and tear on roads and parking lots or uh, over time, is that something that he is willing to absorb to uh, to have this relationship with, with Pierce College?
You know, that's a great question. Um, we don't really, you know, it's an old parking lot now. And of all the facilities that have been improved at Fort Silicon, the roadway into that parking lot and that parking lot are the last on the list. And so um, we may be able to during this process, you know, take a look at what kinds of improvements could be made to those so we could build those into maybe, as the mayor said, some replacement language or look at some other kinds of resources to offset that. Um, but I think that's a great, um, that's a great uh, point to make and we'll, we'll put that in that list of things that we need to make sure that we consider because there is that, that impact. And so whether we absorb it or whether it gets put into some other kind of package, um, that's a great point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Coffield.
Uh, no, Deputy Mayor first, Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
Mary, would there be, would there be a need to improve the restroom that would be fairly close in proximity to that field? I think it's the one over by the uh, end of the parking lot, right?
Right. Uh, uh, there isn't, um, we don't believe there's a need at this point to improve that restroom based on uh, previous, we've had tournaments there, you know, for years. We've had other kinds of uses. So um, I don't see that need at this point. Um, you know, part of what we do is if there's a seasonal issue that creates capacity, then we can bring in portable units for special kinds of, of, of um, events and things. But um, I don't think there's a major improvement that's needed at this point, so.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Back to Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, the purpose tonight, I think I introduced this to you last month and uh, the purpose tonight was to give you a more detailed briefing and to see if there was any interest in counseling, council wanting to pursue this partnership with Pierce County, Pierce College. Um, I'm getting the inclination that the answer to that is yes. And if so, if it pleases the council, Mayor, we could certainly put this on your agenda for, as part of your next regular meeting on January 19th for um, council consideration, if that's so, if that's your wish and desire. And I would just need a nod on that.
Any objections? Uh, looks, looks like you have your consensus to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. And just like to recognize uh, Ms. Dodsworth for all of her great work here as well as uh, she does a fantastic job maintaining a really, really strong and positive working relationship with Pierce College on a number of fronts as well. So just wanted to recognize her for that.
We, we recognize her ability to squeeze blood out of turnips. This is yet another funding source, rather substantial.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And then uh, next up, and this is a carryover from, from uh, December. Like to call upon our senior policy analyst, Shannon Kelly Fong and our police chief, Mike Zarro, to give you an update on behavioral health process. If you recall, this was something that the council had asked early, for earlier this fall in regards to quote-unquote, you know, how the system works, if you will. And uh, so um, Ms. Kelly Fong and Chief Zarro have um, I, I think done a fantastic job pulling together a great report and analysis. And uh, also want to point out that Ms. Kelly Fong um, recently updated the analysis to include action that the Pierce County Council took um, in the middle part of December by um, finally putting in place the one-tenth of 1% for um, sales tax for mental health. So with that, I will turn it over to um, those two. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Um, I'm joined here by Liquid Police Chief Mike Zarro. And the purpose of our presentation tonight is number one, to provide a high-level overview of the existing behavioral health system in Pierce County. And then also number two, to provide an overview of the current options that are available for uh, city of Liquid Police Officers that come into contact with individuals displaying acute uh, behavioral health issues. Um, for the purpose of this presentation and for the purpose of the memo, uh, behavioral health refers to both mental health and substance abuse issues. So I'm gonna share my screen here with you. Can I just get a nod real quick that you can all see my screen? Great. So in 2016, uh, the Human Service Research Institute produced uh, the Behavioral Health System Study Final Report for the Pierce County Council. Uh, they also produced an addendum to this study in 2018. And what this study did was it provided background, um, service and prevention needs uh, where they identified resource, capacity and service gaps, uh, challenges in the existing system. And then they also provided service uh, and support and infrastructure recommendations. Um, again, like I said, we're gonna be spending um, most of this time talking about uh, crisis uh, services that are available and specifically uh, what are available here in the city of Lakewood. Uh, in addition to those two studies that I just mentioned, in October 2020, uh, the Regional System of Care Committee presented the Strategic Plan for Behavioral Health System Improvements uh, to the Pierce County Council. Um, and this committee consisted of members of mental health, uh, substance abuse recovery, physical health and government entities. And it's attached in uh, the memo tonight as attachment E. So you can read the full report there. Basically, what this strategic plan did, just like the studies before it, is it provided a more up-to-date list of programs and services that exist in Pierce County. It also identified gaps and finally it presented recommendations uh, to Pierce County Council. Uh, the recommendations were number one, to implement a provider and community-led Medicaid accountable care organization, also known as an ACO model in the region known as uh, the Pierce ACO Model. Uh, two, it was to establish a regional data platform called the Data Strategy Collective, which will be used to collect data from multiple providers in Pierce County and then also to measure how effective services uh, were being provided. And then three, target new tax revenue to leverage both the Pierce ACO Model and the Data Strategy Collective. Uh, like I said, the study identified gaps in the current uh, system in uh, Pierce County. And what I have up here are some of the depths, uh, excuse me, some of the gaps that were identified in the study and each uh, area. So community education, prevention and early intervention, et cetera, all have gaps identified in them through the study. Um, in addition to identifying gaps, uh, the study also recommended funding principles for any new uh, tax resources that became available by the county. And I've provided um, a list of those recommended uh, funding principles. And you can take a look at those um, through attachment E or on page 96 of the memorandum. Um, and finally, the strategic plan also recommended measurements to track and evaluate performance. Um, and so here are the six that were recommended uh, by the um, Regional System of Care Committee in the strategic plan. Uh, so based on this information, in uh, December 2020, the Pierce County uh, voted to adopt a one-tenth of 1% sales tax to increase funding for behavioral health and therapeutic court services. Um, as part of this ordinance, which I've provided a link in the memorandum. I also authorized the creation of the Pierce ACO Model, which was described in the strategic plan and established a behavioral health advisory board, um, which is tasked with creating a sixer implementation plan. And then it also outlined um, spending for these monies in 2021, which I provided here on the right-hand side of this slide. So we're gonna transition here really quickly uh, to the services that are available currently in Pierce County. So uh, I've I've broke down in memorandum, um, services by uh, different areas, but one of the areas is hotlines. As you can see here in Pierce County, there are several hotlines that are available uh, to individuals in Pierce County. Uh, there are also several county uh, mobile behavioral health crisis teams. So there are, there is the mobile outreach crisis team and this is a partnership with MultiCare in Pierce County. And this group uh, provides crisis outreach services, including face-to-face evaluations. Uh, they can't transfer anybody, but they can refer uh, individuals having acute uh, behavioral health issues to uh, designated crisis responders or to hospitals. There's also the Mobile Communication Intervention Response Team. Uh, this is a team that includes mental health professionals, um, you know, case managers, uh, peer specialists. And they are uh, designed to uh, go out into the community and meet with the community and try to um, reduce the amount of uh, high-frequency emergency users. And part of this process is that they work with clients until they're stabilized and then they follow them for an additional 90 days um, post-intervention uh, to monitor uh, how they're doing. Currently, this uh, program is only available in a handful of Pierce County localities, but as I mentioned with the one-tenth of 1%, this is one of the programs um, that is looking to be expanded. Uh, so first responders and police um, are commonly uh, the first line of response for behavioral health crises is uh, here in Pierce County. And I'm gonna turn it over to uh, Police Chief Mike Zarro to talk a little bit more about um, the Mental Health Corresponder Program here in the city of Lakewood.
Thanks, Shannon. Uh, Mayor Anderson, council members first, Happy New Year to you all. So the uh, one- So the, uh, one thing too, that I want to point out is we talk about options for, um, people that are either in crisis or, um, suffering some sort of acute mental illness. When we talk about jail or make references to jail as a quote-unquote option, we still have to meet the threshold of cause that a crime's been committed, so we're not, that's a clarification there. There's the narrative that we are arresting people for, uh, who mentally have, uh, happened substance abuse. So. So some of the, uh, that are available to us, uh, our officers, um, probably, at least daily, um, are confronted by somebody that's in crisis, um, and that's, that can be, uh, you know, come to us any number of ways, typically a nine-one-one call, um, but we have, uh, you know, crisis intervention training that, uh, was state mandated a couple of years ago, but something that, um, many of our officers already did, but we are all go, going through that. And then we have, uh, the, uh, Mental Health Co-Responders Programs, um, there's, uh, of which we have had one of the first in the county, um, in our, uh, Behavioral Health Contact Team with Ralph and Carolyn, who you have all met. Uh, the goal, eh, with Ralph and Carolyn, our Behavioral Health Contact Team, was to, um, have a team that became our in-house, uh, subject matter experts on the mental health system within Pierce County, uh, because, eh, as I think you've seen, and we'll see more of here, uh, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and having, you know, trying to have every officer understand all of it, it's a big ask, so having them in, in-house that can, um, explain it to everybody and have a, a good in-depth understanding is helpful. Uh, it was also to reduce the number of interactions between officers and, um, people who were generating calls for service, based mostly on their mental illness. Uh, and I think we have seen some of that, it's been a while since we generated or pulled some of our, um, our data, but early on, uh, I think a couple of years into the program, when we did, we saw that, um, people that were typically generating frequent calls for service from patrol, uh, once they were, um, contacted, uh, by Ralph and Carolyn, their, um, patrol interactions decreased significantly. So we did see that as a positive, uh, outcome from, uh, the Behavioral Health Contact Team. Uh, Tacoma does have one, Pierce County, uh, has one that's, uh, started up a little more recently. All right, Shannon? So one of the things we want to talk about too is the Involuntary Treatment Act, um, and that's what allows, uh, you'll hear a reference to designated crisis responders, they also used to be called DMHPs, but they changed the name. Um, they and us, the police, are the only ones that can involuntarily commit someone on the spot for mental health treatment. Now, the, the threshold for that is pretty high. Uh, they have to be an imminent threat to themselves or someone else, um, or gravely disabled and not able to make a decision to care for themselves. Um, that's, those are pretty high standards, uh, and those are the, the thresholds that have to be met for our officers to involuntarily, uh, commit somebody. Okay, Shannon? So I know one question that, uh, was raised before is what options are available to officers once we do have somebody, whether it's voluntary or involuntary? And, um, I know there's a lot of focus on why we're taking them to, uh, hospital, uh, emergency departments, when really, it's because that's the best option available to us. So when we have somebody that we, uh, uh, encounter, uh, and we've made the, the determination that they need to be, they've met the threshold for involuntary commitment, um, we have to take them somewhere, and our options, as you'll see here, are largely emergency rooms, um, because that's where the, the mental health, uh, social workers and the, the DCRs are typically housed. Um, and a lot of times too, there's other co-occurring, um, ailments that need to be addressed, um, or at least evaluated by medical professionals. So, um, with that, our officers typically, when they have somebody for, that they're, uh, involuntarily committing or voluntarily taking to treatment or evaluation, will go to the emergency room, and in our case, that's St. Clair Hospital. Um, obviously not ideal, it's not ideal for the hospital, probably not ideal for the patient, but, uh, for our officers, it's the best option available to them. Uh, once at the emergency department, then they're evaluated by, um, the social workers and the DCRs. Now, one thing that, uh, is important to understand, at any time in this process, the, uh, patient, um, the person in crisis, if they're there involuntarily, we bring somebody to the emergency room, they can change their mind and say, okay, I'm, I'm open to treatment. They automatically change to voluntary, in which case, they can decide at any time that they no longer wish to be treated and can leave the hospital. So it's, uh, it, you know, if the officer stays there long enough, they can tell the social worker exactly what they saw and make that clarification, say, no, 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 here's, here's what we're seeing, but often, uh, oftentimes, the patient will be dropped off by the officer, the officer will share what information they have, and then the patient will say, well, no, I do want treatment, either, for whatever reason, and once they're voluntary, they can rescind that at any time and just leave. So we see that quite a bit. All right, Shannon? Um, and we talked a little bit about voluntary, oh, Shannon, can you go back one? So Well Found, um, that's the new hospital up by Allenmore, um, they've had some stutter starts, uh, I think everybody's aware of some of the issues they had trying to get going. Um, I did have a conversation with them about, uh, police drop-offs, and I think there's a, a slide coming up that will show what some of the restrictions are for, uh, us being able to drop people off there. It's really very limited, so even though they are adding more beds, the criteria there, um, uh, here's, yeah, the start of the exclusion criteria is right there. Um, if there's any substance issues, if there's, uh, uh, drug or alcohol intoxication, we can't take them there, and that's whether it's voluntary or involuntary. All right, Shannon? And then we get into, um, some of the attachments, the, it's kind of the flow charts are, while it looks complicated, this one in particular is pretty good at showing the, the decision tree that officers use when they come in contact with somebody who is, um, experiencing some sort of, uh, mental crisis. There's, uh, you know, two tracks, with voluntary or involuntary, um, and you can see down at the bottom, at some point, they can change from involuntary to voluntary and, and leave, or the staff can determine, the DCR can determine that, no, they need to be held, and then they change to, uh, involuntary. But you'll see, too, that under the, the, the treatment options or the, the placement options for us, um, emergency departments, uh, at hospitals are really what's, what's most available to us right now. So with that, I think Shannon and I'd both be, uh, happy to answer any questions you have about, um, the system is, you know, as best we can describe it, or, or talk about its flaws, or, uh, what, uh, our officers have available to them, uh, in the field.
Thank you. Mr. Whelan.
You're muted.
Thank you for the report and the information, I appreciate it. Couple of questions for you, Chief, I, I didn't sense, um, the gravity of the situation on the street by numbers, can you give us some anecdotal thoughts on how many calls for service in a given month that you would have officers enter folks into either the voluntary or the involuntary track?
Um, I, I'll have to look that, we can pull that easily enough, I don't have that, but that's, that's a great question, and I can, uh, pull that easily enough and email that to you by the end of the week, but.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, I mean, a couple of times a week anyways, uh, if not higher.
Okay. When do we anticipate getting the, the second Behavioral Contact Team up and running that we funded with, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Well, and it's not a full team, it's just, it's still one officer, but a second MHP.
Okay.
Um, and that's, uh, one of the, the discussions I need to have with the city manager about, um, funding and working with Greater, Greater Lakes is on board, so it's a matter of, uh, identifying when, uh, we internally want to do that, and then going through the selection process for that person with Greater Lakes, because it's, it does take a, the right person to be able to do that.
And then just anecdotally again, um, you know, we, we hear a lot, a lot of us have seen the social media over the last several days, a lot of uproar over the homeless situation around City Hall and around the city in general. Is it your understanding that much of the behavioral contact that you folks have are folks other than the homeless folks around City Hall, there are domestic violence cases probably, or other situations other than the homeless, I would assume, or am I wrong?
Um, well, Deputy Mayor, I'd never say you're wrong. Um, I, however, a good deal of, uh, the people that our, our Behavioral Health Contact Team works with are homeless folks.
Okay.
Um, but we have to have options for them, and they, they need to be willing to accept those options, but remember, the threshold for us to be able to mandate anything is if they're gravely disabled or an imminent threat to themselves or others, and many don't qualify for that. Um, so if the options aren't there, uh, or they're not willing to take the options, then we're, we're, there's not much our Behavioral Health Contact Team can do. And the example I use is, uh, his name is Mish, who we have, have seen on a hundredth over in front of the Ram quite a bit, who is oftentimes covered in tarps, um, we've talked to him several times, Ralph and Carolyn have actually approached him with a bag of food and he turned it down. Um, it's somebody like that that is, is tough, nobody likes to see somebody living like that, but our options are severely limited when he doesn't meet any sort of, uh, criteria for involuntary treatment, and he doesn't want it.
City Hall, Sylvia and Ed, is that the situation?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, there's, yeah, and they're all, it, although in some cases, they'll tell you, well, I'm on a list waiting to get in somewhere. Um, and a lot of times, that could be true, that there, you know, there's waiting lists to get into different housing, uh, options, and, uh, they could, you'd be waiting for that very thing, um, some others are just saying it to, so we'll leave them alone.
Appreciate it, thank you. Glad you're feeling better.
Uh, much better, thank you. Uh, it was a long two weeks, so.
This is Moss.
Mr. Mayor, and as chief, Happy New Year, it's good to see you.
You too.
Uh, I was just curious to know, if you have a sense of how many people that you turn in that turn around and say, I'm okay, I can go now, how long of a period does that take for them to? Do you have a record of that?
Uh, I, we don't really have a record of that, because that would, um, those would all be health records kept at either a hospital or, um, whatever facility, you know, if there's, happens to be something other than a hospital, we can get people into. Um, but I can tell you, that is something that does happen, uh, and to the point where it happens regularly enough that, uh, Ralph and Carolyn know about it, and they talk about it as being one of the, uh, the issues that they face, so they, you know, somebody ends up going to a hospital, but then turns around and, you know, is able to negotiate their, their release essentially, and receives no treatment.
Yeah, I have a friend that has a daughter that she's been after me to be able to involuntarily take them in, but to let them back out would just be devastating to her, because they both, it's a family that has mental issues, so.
Now, i- if you look at, uh, the, the packet that Shannon put together, there is reference in there to Joel's Law, uh, and that is something that's fairly new in the past couple of years, where it does allow for families to petition a judge to, um, essentially involuntarily treat or detain, uh, a family member that's, um, in crisis. So that's something that you can share with, uh, your friend.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I think this is for Chief Zarro on, I think it would be page one thirty-three of the packet, and, and it says inpatient services, so I'm still trying to wrap my hands around, you, you go to St. Clair, and I'm guessing, number one, because there's all sorts of stuff going on, some of it physical health, a lot of it mental health, substance abuse, and, and it's not fair for the officers to try to fit, to try to figure all this stuff out, but it's also closer, so, so, but what I, and, and you work with Greater, you do Greater Lakes stuff, and they, they put that ENT together in Parkland, so, and the, and this says, it talks about the ENT, and then it talks about the New Crisis Recovery Center that should be opening in Parkland, I think in the spring, that the county built. ENTs are pretty high-level care, crisis response, recovery centers not as, is my understanding, so tell me, tell me if I'm wrong there, and tell me, are those things your officers take these people to when it says first responders, or are they basically saying this is usually, uh, EMTs?
That is usually where, uh, the Evaluation Treatment Centers are where the DCR is working in the hospitals, send the patient.
Oh, okay.
They'll make the determination, they need to be held for seventy-two hours and send them there. Um, I, I, by and large, our officers can't just drop somebody off at an ENT, they have to do a DCR first.
Okay. And then how does the, how, you know, you don't use the one in Fife, it's way out there, it would take you all day to get there, um, but how do you see yourself using the Crisis Recovery Center?
Well, some of that's gonna depend on what, uh, criteria they put in place for admission.
Sure.
Uh, you know, if they have restrictions like Well Found, where, um, you know, there can't be any co-occurring disorders with substance abuse or anything like that, or, or no, no current or recent violence, um, you know, the, those restrictions really count and limit what we can do, so it's gonna, that's what's gonna determine our ability to use that.
Yeah, I guess, I, I don't know what's going on with Well Found, because I, I looked at those criteria, and I'm just like, well, I'm not sure who could go, who, ba- ba- basically, they, they've written so many caveats that you, I, I don't see how you could determine, I, I tried to find the, I, person that would actually be eligible to go under their criteria, and I'm, I'm kind of sensing that that's not who they want.
Well, I'll tell you who, who I think, uh, is ideal, uh, for something like that, is someone who's suicidal, um, and maybe made an attempt, or, um, our officers believe is sincere in their, their intent, um, would take them there, because they, I think, fit, because I had the, the exact same thoughts you did when I read those criteria, trying to think, well, who would be accepted, and I do think that that is somebody that, um, you know, that you have somebody that's suicidal, has not ingested a bunch of alcohol or drugs, um, and, uh, has formed a sincere intent, uh, I do think that somebody like that would be, uh, admitted to Well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Bransdeter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I really appreciated the packet and being able to, to read through it, and I appreciate, uh, I like, well, the, really to research and pull things up, and I, I also understand that asking questions is probably, since the authorism here is difficult to, to do that, but I, uh, with the information that was there regarding the, uh, the strategic plan that was recommended, and that of the sev- the sev- the seventh element about what you do with the money if you get it, it says prioritize existing programs that do not have sustainable funding sources. And I was wondering if there was any insight of why the word successful isn't somewhere in that sentence, uh, it's, it's existing instead of successful, um, and, uh, is there something about the way that the report was put together that, that would have driven that recommendation that way?
I would say, um, you know, one of the things that they're asking for is better data collection, so that might be helpful, um, with that particular item of, let's collect better data so we can better gauge the success of the programs that are being offered.
Okay. And I, I understand that the, uh, Okay. And I, I understand that the, uh, the council approving the one percent, uh, sales tax to generate some revenue, which is good. I mean, that was part of our, uh, county legislative agenda to get them to do something to generate revenue. But what really is the state approval process for the, for an ACO model? Uh, is that long, time-consuming, a sure thing?
I believe it has to be approved by spring of twenty twenty-one.
Well, that, I think that's what the council said that they wanted it approved by then. But at the state level, does it turn things around that fast? Uh, and is there some chance there won't be approved?
I can't speak to that council, Branstadter.
Okay, I, 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 I accept that because I doubt.
I, I think it's safe to say it's not a sure bet and it may come out in some modified form.
Okay. And the last question is, uh, it mentioned twelve million dollars, um, for the county. Um, is that on top of what Tacoma collects or is Tacoma now under the county? Uh, is that money gonna go to the county where Tacoma had previously been collecting one percent?
Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Branstadter, uh, since the city of Tacoma implemented their, the, the one-tenth of one percent prior to the county, um, they're stay separate. So the twelve million dollars that the Pierce County Council, I'm sorry, the one-tenth of one percent that the Pierce County Council implemented pertains to all of the cities and unincorporated areas of Pierce County except for the city of Tacoma. And by the way, we, um, estimate that out of that twelve million dollars that the county will be collecting, um, probably a little bit over one million dollars is coming from the city of Lakewood.
All right. Thank you.
Then back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I just, uh, again, want to recognize, um, Ms. Kelly Fong and Chief Zaro for, um, um, I know when this, this request for an analysis first came about, it's one of those things, um, you know, you're not quite, gonna be quite sure what the analysis is gonna show, but I can say is your city manager completely exceeded my expectations and, uh, you know, I know we live and breathe a lot of this on a daily basis, but, um, how they pu- both pulled it together and, um, you made it easy for me to understand. I just want to, um, thank them both for taking the time and the resources to do this as well as their, um, their, their staff that were working on this, particularly, um, the behavioral health contact team, uh, Officer Rocco and, and Carolyn for, uh, helping out with this. Um, I, I hope you found it valuable. Um, uh, just a, a few more updates if I might, uh, you know, right before, uh, the Christmas holiday, uh, we were contacted about, by AWC about signing on to what's called, um, Washington Rolling, uh, which is a group of, um, public agencies, including, you know, labor and businesses, environmental groups, et cetera. Um, you know, preparing a letter to encourage the state legislature to a, to adopt, to consider and adopt a transportation infrastructure, uh, program during the upcoming legislative session. Um, earlier today I did, uh, go ahead and add the city of Lakewood with the mayor's name as a part of that. Um, I did double check with the mayor. Um, and, uh, the reason being is because it is consistent with your state legislative policy manual under transportation and infrastructure and particularly infrastructure funding and supporting a, um, state transportation infrastructure package. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, heads up on that. Um, also, if you remember, um, we've been working with the Nisqually's and they had promised a letter rescinding their notification that they had canceled our contract. Uh, we did receive that letter on, uh, December fourteenth. And, um, so we are officially, um, utilizing their services again. However, the caveat is, is that they would like to have a new contract in place by, um, by, uh, March fifteenth of this year. And so both our legal department and our police department are taking lead and working with them and hopefully, um, we'll have something to bring back to this body for your review and consideration sometime in, 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 in first quarter. I think as you're all aware, the, uh, COVID nineteen vaccination is out there. It's being distributed. Uh, right now, this is all being driven by the state and the Department of Health. Uh, we're currently in what's being defined as phase one A, which is, um, administering the vaccination to folks who are working the front lines in healthcare. So those are dirt doctors, nurses, folks along those lines, as well as some first responders such as ENT firefighter, EMTs, um, who are working directly with patients of COVID. Um, and then older adults who are living in, you know, various, uh, facilities and very high, highly vulnerable, uh, population. So that's moving along. Um, after one A is done, it's expected that the state is then gonna move to what's called phase one B and then one C. Um, and it is likely that within one B or certainly one C that, um, some city of Lakewood employees would be, um, eligible for that, particularly our first responders. So what we're doing in anticipation of that is we are putting together a prioritized list of all of our employees, um, if and when the state opens up, um, for municipal employees to be allowed to take the vaccination and we just want to be ready to do that. So we should have that squared away here in the next, in the next week or two. Um, as far as the delivery of the vaccination to the general public, um, as more information becomes available on that, we'll be sure not only to share that with you, but also the community, the community as a whole. Uh, meantime, uh, the Pierce County, want to thank them. They have, uh, set up a, uh, testing location here, here in Lakewood over at the former Department of Licensing Admissions Testing, um, site. And, uh, so that is open, um, from Wednesdays through Sundays from ten thirty in the morning till five thirty in the afternoon. They are closed Monday and Tuesday. Um, but, uh, if people want to go over and get a COVID nineteen test, uh, that's the place to go. And then, uh, likewise, the county's mobile testing operation is gonna be coming to Fort Stilliken Park, um, this Saturday, January ninth from, uh, ten AM to three PM as, as, as well. Um, I was talking to Dave Buhr, uh, late this afternoon and, uh, he shared some information with me that I think you'll find very, very exciting. So, uh, we finished the year, um, new permit valuation, new construction. Hold on to your hats, uh, totaling a hundred and sixty million dollars. Hundred and sixty million. Now to put that in perspective, as you heard me say in two thousand eighteen, when it was a hundred and twenty-five million, that was a record year. Um, and again, I put that in perspective, typically on any given year, since incorporation, the city, we would average twenty-five, thirty-five million dollars a year. Maybe a good year was fifty million. So in two thousand eighteen, we're at a hundred and twenty-five million. Last year we were at eighty-eight million and this year we're at a hundred and sixty million. That is quite phenomenal. And again, that is a reflection of the policies that this bo- bo- board has put in place to attract businesses and promote economic development. And it's also because of a lot of the work that's been done the last ten, fifteen, even going back twenty years. Um, in terms of the types of investment this past year that have come to Lakewood, out of that hundred and sixty million, sixty-eight million new commercial. Um, another twenty-three million commercial remodels. Another twenty-two million commercial additions. So adding on to addition, uh, uh, existing commercial activity. Twenty-one million, uh, new single-family residences that are coming out of the ground. And, and remember, everybody says that Lakewood is built up, um, which we are. Um, another nine million, uh, for, uh, multi-family. And then another six million in, um, residential remodels and repairs, which we attribute to a bit of a, uh, contagious activity associated with our rental housing safety program with folks coming in and cleaning up their properties and making improvements. And then all of a sudden, once one neighbor does it, another neighbor does it and so on and so on. And you're really beginning, uh, to see some significant improvements in our, in our, in our neighborhoods. But those are the top six. Um, also, uh, Mr. Buhr wanted me to report to you that, um, he was informed late last week, late last week that a company from the city of Tacoma called Aero Precision is gonna be relocating to Lakewood in the Lakewood Industrial Park. They are a major, uh, national, uh, manufacturing and engineering firm. And, um, they're gonna be bringing, uh, to start with three hundred employees and potentially expanding to five hundred employees. And, uh, again, they'll be, uh, located in the, um, in the, um, Lakewood Industrial Park. Um, also, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Whalen, uh, sent a link earlier this aft- late this afternoon that the, was it the Pughers Sound Business Journal apparently announced that, um, Black Creek, who is, uh, constructing about a million square feet of new light industrial manufacturing down in Woodbrook, um, has signed a lease with Amazon. Um, and I don't, I, I, we're presuming it's a fulfillment center of some sort. Um, and then likewise, we've been hearing rumblings that perhaps Telsa, Tesla rather, is, uh, looking to locate down there. Um, now the city, we have, we don't have, that's where we're, we're getting that third, fourth party. Uh, nobody's come into the city to tell us that. We have heard some rumblings, but, uh, nobody's come in for TI improvements or anything along those lines. Uh, but again, those are pretty prominent firms that are gonna be, um, coming to Lakewood if it does come to fruition and bring in an incredible, uh, uh, number of jobs as, 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 as well. So a lot of positive things happening on, on the economic, on the economic development front. Um, also in terms of number of permits, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one permits, the most ever issued in, in the city of Lakewood. Also, if you think that this can't get better, uh, Mr. Buhr is projecting that new construction activity in first quarter into second quarter of two thousand twenty-one alone could total fifty million dollars. So again, during, you know, a major economic downturn, um, Lakewood is certainly more than holding, holding its own there. So again, very positive reflection on, and on, on, on our community to be able to attract that type of investment. Um, the last item I'd like to bring forward is, um, we received a request or rather the city clerk received a request um, for the council to, um, consider a proclamation recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Month. And it comes actually from a company or a firm or nonprofit called Adorned, uh, uh, Adorned in Grace, uh, right here in, in, in Lakewood. And they did send over a proclamation. Uh, our recommendation is to put that on your January nineteenth, um, regular meeting if council is so inclined to do that. Um, but, uh, Mayor, I'll look to you and your colleagues if that's something that you want to do. Um, we can, uh, certainly do that. I will point out that, um,
It, it should, it should be human trafficking awareness or anti-human trafficking.
I, I know that's, yeah, I know that's, um, I'm just telling you what, what the, what they sent over. Um, but, uh, I will, I will say, you know, our police department works very cooperatively with a number of regional service, regional agencies, including Washington State Patrol, um, to, um, you know, a- address this very, very serious issue. And, uh, so our recommendation would be to bring forward this proclamation for, um, the council. So unless I see any objection, um, we'll put it on your agenda for, uh, January nineteenth. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Questions for the city manager? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Go to council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just as we get back into the swing of things, a couple of things I'll be doing this week. Uh, on Thursday, I will be attending the Lakewood Promise Board meeting and on Friday, the Martin Luther King Celebration. And then I'll be giving an update on those coming Monday. So Happy New Year, everybody. It's good to see you and stay safe.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that as I'm, uh, I am looking at, uh, tomorrow to, uh, uh, listening in at the meeting of the Tacoma Planning Commission where they're, uh, going to be discussing the tide flats, uh, uh, and industrial land, uh, some permanent regulations where they currently have, uh, temporary ones. And I'm sort of doing that with, uh, my, uh, subarea, tide flat subarea plan advisory committee hat on as well. Um, see where that goes. And, uh, you know, I hope every, all of you had, uh, really great holidays. Uh, Hannah and I had, uh, a, a good set of holidays. She did a lot of baking. So on December twenty-seventh, we were able to celebrate National Fruitcake Day. And, uh, things are going on and, uh, and I'm looking forward to, uh, and, and certainly hoping that, uh, um, uh, a good mix of, uh, of our citizens, uh, give serious consideration to applying to be Mr. Simpson's replacement.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I don't really have any comments. I hope everyone enjoyed their holidays and I really do appreciate, uh, all the, really the great news on the, on the permitting front and the employment front. Maybe more, more importantly, on the, on the employment front. I'm glad employment is beginning to follow, uh, a, a, a lot of this construction. And it, it sounds like there's great things o- o- on the horizon. The one thing I did wanna, and I should have probably asked you in your, in your remarks, uh, for the city manager or a suggestion. It seems as though the vaccination process in the state of Washington has not been really up to snuff, uh, given the last few weeks. In fact, I, I saw a list where we were one of the lowest states, uh, percentage-wise already. I mean, five percent being good, right? And there were some states in that five to seven percent range and we were like in the bottom five. So as this thing gets ramp, ramped up, um, I, I, I throw out there, um, consideration that we offer or try to help them find some space, ask them how much space they, they feel they need to do a va- to do a vaccination site and try to make that available to them. I, I don't think the city hall would work. Um, and the police station might be too small, but you know, maybe we work with the county and we use the, um, the, uh, the, the community center or something like that, or, or if you've got a better idea, I, 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 I'd love to hear it. I just, I'm not requesting it. I'm just saying that that may be in the spirit of, of, uh, of Lakewood, of really being, trying to do everything possible to make this process as easy as, as possible and as efficient as possible, that we, we step up and, and offer some help if that's possible. And I'll, I'll just throw that out for your consideration, Mr. City Manager. And that's all I've got.
Thanks. And I, Paul, I, I note on that, that, um, there's currently some planning at Pierce County DEM for an alternative, uh, much like the, uh, testing was set up as a parallel track when the State Department of Health and Local Department of Health, uh, were say, said we were gonna rely on the industry to do it. Uh, currently the Department, State Department of Health is in charge. They have no plan. Uh, so, uh, other than, well, the feds have contracted with CVS and we'll give some vaccine to the hospitals. Uh, there is no plan for implementation that's worth anything. So, uh, there may be an alternative track and space is one of the, one of the criteria. Getting your hands on the vaccine is the choke point. Uh, because the state controls one hundred percent of vaccine. So, um, it would have to break loose for anything to happen locally. Ms. Farmer.
I received a Christmas card. The very first Christmas card I got was from Councilmember Branstadter and it said, Happy Better New Year. And that's been my mantra ever since. Happy Better New Year. I have never been more excited about a new year than this year and it's day four. It's crazy. I also forgot to bring up something during the city manager's remarks and I'm curious about the agenda for our joint city council school board meeting and wondering if we have time to talk about that next week or?
Yes, Councilmember Farmer, I'm currently in dialogue with the school superintendent and I expect to have something for your review and input, et cetera, based upon input I've already received from you individually as part of your, um, meeting next week as your study session reports by the city manager.
Excellent. Thank you. And I also wanted to, uh, put out another pitch to any qualified Lakewood resident uh, who is interested in the open city council position, uh, particularly again with light to gender parity and diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, repre- uh, people who represent. Uh repress uh people who represent um one of the most diverse cities in the state. Thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
You, I just want to uh dovetail on the good economic news that the city manager imparted in the article that I passed out. He made forward to you. The the interesting thing about the warehousing that we have helped facilitate in the Woodbrook and Springbrook area is it actually can lead to some good employment. The Puget Sound Business Journal article here tonight talked about the Amazon facility. Uh that will employ, quote, hundreds of people, which is pretty significant when you see that the. Warehousing and distribution facilities that we've seen to date haven't had that volume of employment. So more remains to be seen, but it's all good news. I think it's a better new year uh with this kind of news than than not, so I appreciate that. Um I met tonight uh with the Arts Commission on Zoom. We talked a lot about uh their work plan for the coming year. They're gonna focus less on participation in parks and rec types of activities like the winter holiday. They really want to focus their efforts on art, uh visual and performing arts and are working again on kind of a redirect of our attention on the colonial art. So more to follow on that. We'll probably get a couple of options that they're gonna bring forward with uh their process. And uh they want to expeditiously pick a new artist, get a design in place and get something done this year. So that's a good sign. Um on the parks facilities, uh. Enough about that. If you haven't gone out and looked at the new bathroom facility over by the dog park, it's beautiful. Uh really, really well done, all that work in there. Looks great, a little bit of tagging already by some friend of ours out in the community, which bugs the. Stuff out of me, so hopefully those kinds of things will be um taken care of readily. And then finally, on the comment tonight in the report by uh Chief Zarro and Kelly Shannon Fong. Fantastic report. You know, we asked for that report before the county council passed our one tenth of one percent. I'm really excited now that uh there there really is a mechanism in place to properly fund uh needed mental health services, behavioral health services. The one question for us coming out of that report is what can we do to support the need for supportive housing? So we have the fourteen oh six monies a little bit. We know that they can't do a lot uh unless we aggregate those funds somehow on a regional basis, perhaps with the county, maybe with Piala. But if there is a a need to supplement the good work the county is doing by. Passing uh the funding mechanism and setting up the structure with an AOC, it's it's worth looking at supportive housing piece at this point. See how I can, we can be part of the solution. So with that, we'll make it a better new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I note that uh word has it that the governor's office is going to announce. The uh one B priority criteria for COVID vaccinations on Wednesday. So that would uh be valuable information for uh. City manager and determining how we prioritize within our ranks. Uh good to hear that uh there's progress on the. Contracting front with the Nisqually tribe, both because of our relationship with the tribe and the need for jail capacity. And I would hope in that contract that even with COVID, we can have a little more flexibility in the who we can lock up. Uh than we have with the Pierce County Jail, which is highly restrictive. Um I was uh pleased to hear the newest on Arrow Precision. Uh. The uh city manager and I had a confidential recruiting visit with the. The uh CEO of Arrow Precision. And uh those are highly technical machinist. Family wage jobs, those are not people stacking boxes in a warehouse. So to get three hundred of those jobs in Lakewood is a big deal. And they recruit nationally for their talent. It's not uh, it's not just hiring people off the street and giving them a little bit of training because they're skilled folks. Um. I uh attended the uh county councils uh in district. Uh meeting on the sixteenth, which was uh Council Chair Doug Richardson's last in district meeting for District Six. Um and gave uh an update on what was going on in Lakewood. Uh I I did limit it to about five minutes as requested because as the city manager has indicated, there's a lot going on out here. Uh that's good news. And I did manage to uh film my MLK intro for the the event. And uh with enough takes, uh even I can sound cogent, I think. So um is there anything further to come before the council? Well, thank you for uh bearing with us to ten thirty five. Uh we haven't met for a few weeks and there was a lot to do. Uh but uh have a better new year. Good night, we're adjourned.